All right, I call the 2,437th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. This meeting is being held in person at City Hall and by video conference. The public may participate in this meeting by coming to City Hall or joining the Zoom webinar. The meeting is being broadcast live on the city's YouTube channel and Comcast Cable Channel 30 within city limits. There will be opportunities for the public to speak during this meeting. If you would like to address council, you may come to City Hall or participate via Zoom. If you are interested in speaking, please let staff know by filling out a yellow comment card on the table back there for those at City Hall, or emailing OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov for those on Zoom. When it is time to take public comments, staff will monitor the comment cards, email inbox, and Zoom participant list and chat. We will take comments in the order they are received and seen. Comments may be emailed to OCR@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. We ask that all Zoom participants who intend to speak label their Zoom username to show their first and last names for the record. Spanish translation services are available upon request. The public is asked to request translation and other meeting accessibility services at least 48 hours before the meeting. For more information, contact the city recorder at 503-786-7502. Servicios de traducción en español está disponible cuando se ha solicitado. Se pide al público que solicite servicios de traducción y otros servicios de accesibilidad por lo menos 48 horas antes de la reunión. Para obtener más información, llama al secretario de la ciudad a 503-786-7502. Translation services are also available in other languages. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Kalapuyia, etc. treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. And with that, we will go to our announcements, which usually have a bigger slide than that. Okay, okay, I'll go ahead and start reading though. Way in on a draft policy to name parks, recreational facilities, trails, natural areas, and other city assets by taking a short survey on Engage Milwaukee. The last day to participate will be December 1st. And the website link is right there, engage.milwaukeeoregon.gov. And there's a few different items you can find there to engage on. Stop by the King Road Open House tomorrow, November 19th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Llewellyn Elementary School to review the plan sets and ask questions about the King Road Improvement Project. Join Council President Will Anderson and Greer Ryan, neighbor and climate activists, at a town hall this Wednesday, tomorrow, also tomorrow, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Chapel Theater. The town hall begins with a community workshop and Q&amp;A from 6:30 to 7:30, and then transitions to a community mixer from 7:30 to 8:00. And one other thing tomorrow is the Island Station Neighborhood Association meeting, and I'll be at that one. The city is once again holding free leaf drop opportunities for city residents. The next one will be held this Saturday, November 22nd, from 7:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Public Works Yard on Johnson Creek Boulevard. Please bring along utility bill for proof of residency. Volunteer to help maintain trails and remove invasive species along Kellogg Creek this Saturday, November 22nd, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. The event takes place at the Milwaukee Presbyterian Church Outdoor Sanctuary and is led by the North Clackamas Watershed Council. The Thanksgiving Farmers Market returns this Sunday, November 23rd, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I know the Rotary will again be selling wreaths. They sell some beautiful wreaths every year at that event. Join author and historian Mark James Carpenter for a discussion of his book, "The War on Ilahi: Genocide, Complicity, and Cover-Ups in the Pioneer Northwest", next Tuesday, November 25th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Letting Library. Please keep in mind that city offices and the library will be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th. Lastly, help the city's beloved mascot Millie T. Goose find a new best friend for 2026. Nominate your pet today on Engage Milwaukee. Nominations will be received until January 2nd, but don't wait to nominate your pet because the winner will be chosen by the total number of likes on Engage Milwaukee. And then this was a special item I wanted to add to the announcements, which is the Thanksgiving dinner at the Milwaukee Community Center this weekend. I will be talking at the end of our meeting today during our council reports section about the recent North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Advisory Committee meeting. But out of that, it's become clear that the funding for senior services at the Milwaukee Community Center is going to be a big challenge again this year. As many people might know, some things were cut. This past year, well, restored under duress, under outcry, but there really are some tough calls on funding for that programming. And so this fundraiser for Meals on Wheels is really an important way to support the Meals on Wheels and the nutrition program for older adults. So I encourage people who like their Thanksgiving dinners to have an extra one this Sunday. Okay, and then haiku this week. I love the graphic. Nice job, staff. Honking from above, a V on the wing, sky blue, daily miracle. Submitted by Julie Mattney. So, thank you. All right, and with that, I will move on to the outstanding Milwaukee High School, Milwaukee Academy of the Arts Student of the Month. I want to welcome Principal Louis Mayer. Louis? Louis? Or Louis? Louis, there. It's his first time bringing a student to us. He's the new principal this year, and we're glad to have him here. And maybe he can come say a few words about himself and his time at Milwaukee High School, and then go into the student. No? No, no, please come up here, please come up here and sit there. And yeah, you have to have the light on to be caught on the recording, so, yep.
I didn't plan to speak about me. It's about outstanding scholar right here. But I'm Louis Mayer. I'm proud to be here. I'm proud Principal Mayer of Milwaukee High School, Milwaukee Academy of the Arts. I moved here from Atlanta, Georgia, month of August. Been in education, this is my 28th year. Started 14 years as elementary school, eight years, and then six years at middle school level. And then I was an administrator for 14 years, so half and half right now. Yes.
Well, welcome. We're excited to have you. It's a long way to come for you.
Yes, I'm happy to be here. I'm enjoying Portland, Milwaukee, Oregon, all what it has to offer, Pacific Northwest.
Great. Well, then go ahead and introduce your student to us. And I think we have a slide about her.
Well, good afternoon, council members, Mayor Betty. I am here, honored, here to introduce you all to Belale Bibles. My first foray with her was when I was hired, and within two weeks, I had a meeting with Ms. Belale. And to say the least, I was so impressed. She was just so astute, her organization, her maturity, and ability to lead a conversation. In the conversation she led with the plan of action of how we were going to conduct our meetings for the school year, what were going to be the outcomes, and expectations. I refer to myself as proud Principal Mayer. Belale is one of the reasons why the proud is in proud Principal Mayer, because of what she represents for our school. So let me give you her accolades. Academic gold, she has a 4.0 GPA, she's on track to graduate with an honors diploma. Leadership and involvement, she's on the Principal Student Council, she is the president. She's on the speech and debate team, she's in the DECA Club, which is a club for marketing. She's with the Guild of Lehman Historical Institute Student Advisory Council. She's in the Indigenous Students Association. Her community and professional experience, internship in local politics. She's a barista at Boost &amp; Brew Coffee Shop, coming over for that, I mean, no, I found it out now. Her advanced academic pursuits, which has just blew me away. AP Literate, Term Composition, AP Calculus, Spanish III, Creative Writing, Independent Study, Constitutional Law. She's a Reed Young Scholar, she's in the Reed Young Scholars Program at Reed College. She takes a course there currently, American Politics and Public Policy. And she took a course with Cornell University, International Law Course. As you can see, there's a theme about law, law, law here, so we could kind of get where she's going. So I am just so proud to have her as my first Student of the Month for the Milwaukee City Council. And may I have a say a few words?
Absolutely. We generally, especially, would like to hear about what your plans are after graduation, so, yeah, please.
Hello, my name is Belale Bibles. I'm a senior at Milwaukee Academy of the Arts, and it's nice to meet you all. I am currently working towards applying to colleges. I want to study political science for four years in undergraduate and then go to law school.
Great. Are you thinking you'll stay in the Northwest or you're applying everywhere? Yeah, 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 well, that's an amazing resume. It's interesting that you're at the Academy of the Arts, because I'm not seeing... What do you do? What's your art?
I do oil paintings.
Oh, you do oil painting. Very nice, very nice. Well, I didn't know Reed had a program that you could take as a high school student. That's pretty cool. Do you actually go to campus for that?
Yes, I have a course on Mondays and Wednesdays. It's a scholarship program that allows 15 high school students in Oregon to take one class per term.
Yeah, awesome. Well, that's great. Do you, will you do another next term, or it's, yeah, awesome, that's exciting. We generally let all the other councilors ask you questions, or?
Yeah. Belale, I'm sorry that I didn't recognize you in the elevator. So we rode the elevator together, and actually, last year, she had a project where she did an interview and asked us, it was along the lines of government, politics, and all that. I did not recognize her when I walked in. She had to remind me, so, thank you for that. And I'm glad that that project went well. And here we are now, with you as a student of the month, and now I'm putting it all together from here. This is impressive. I especially appreciate the constitutional law, clearly. We could use all the help we can get with that. So my question to you is, what sparked your interest in politics, just in government? Because you've clearly had that interest for a while.
Yeah, first I was just focusing towards law, and then constitutional law from there. And then my work with my AP government teacher, Mr. Alves, at Milwaukee High School, really helped me find, like, narrower that pathway down to policy and wanting to do policy in my undergraduate, and then also gaining my internship.
Do you see a potential run for office in your future?
I want to focus on law school.
That's what people say.
That's a very politic answer.
Yeah, that's very political of you. Congratulations, this is amazing. I can't say enough about the young students that come out of that school, and I just appreciate your commitment, so, thank you so much, and best of luck too. And hopefully one day we'll see you appear, or even at a higher office.
Council President?
I know you've got to go work on your midterm, so I'm going to keep it quick. But I cannot believe that you were a sophomore when I met you, and Valentina, when she connected me with you, she was like, you need to meet Belale. She is incredible, she can walk on water, she just sung your praises. And I, I'm just so proud of the work that you've done, the person that you are. You've seemed like a senior since you were a sophomore, but you have such a bright career ahead of you. You're going to make so many lives that much better, or you're going to make a lot of money, whichever one you do. I'm so proud of you. I just think you are so amazing, and I'm so excited to see what you do next.
Thank you.
I think you left off one of your most important accomplishments, and that is, you've somehow conquered the space-time continuum, because I don't think it's really possible for anyone to do all this in 24 hours a day.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So it's really impressive. I know you have a great future ahead of you, and, you know, we will just say, in the future years, we knew our win. And we'll be so proud of you doing great things as one of Milwaukee's own. So just great, great work, best of luck to you.
Well, thanks again to the principal for bringing Belale to us, to meet us. And I will say, I have a lawyer, so if you ever want to chat, feel free to look me up. I'm happy to talk about law school, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I will read the certificate now that we have. I'm sure that Councilor Stavon George, she's unfortunately not with us tonight, but she's always eager to talk with the students. She has her own student in her household, who's, I believe, a freshman this year. So anyway, I'm sure she's sorry to have missed this opportunity, but we really appreciate you coming. So, "The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School. Belale Bibles, let it be known to all that on this 18th day of November 2025, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, recognized this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation."
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you many more months, Principal. Okay. Okay, I think we have no proclamations tonight. So now we are to community comment. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear community comment on city business items that are not otherwise on the agenda. Before we begin, is there any follow-up from the November 4th comments, Miss Sager?
Mayor, there were no comments made at that meeting, so no comment there. We did receive one written comment about the same incident at the library that I addressed previously, and I'll say from the staff perspective, we consider that matter to be concluded, but I want to acknowledge that that is, I believe, in your packet. And if you have further questions for us, please let us know.
Okay, thank you. I do not have any yellow cards, so if anybody wanted to comment on something not otherwise on the agenda, this is your time. I do not have anybody. Ms. Manigan, is anyone online?
We do have some people online, but nobody has their hand raised.
Okay, so if we don't have anyone wanting to make community comment, I will forego that script, and we will move on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of the City Council October 14th, 2025 retreat, a resolution appointing the inaugural membership group to the Climate Action Committee. Congratulations and thank you to Summer Yessenovsky, Greer Ryan, Rodney Smith in the audience, Marcus Mittage, Brad Reed, Micah Meskell, and Eric Freed, and a resolution acting as the local contract review board reinstating a personal service agreement with FCS Group, a bowman company, for water and wastewater rate study services. Does any council member wish to remove a consent agenda item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Both say no. None heard. The consent agenda is approved unanimously. I will just say, on the Climate Action Committee, we had an amazing lineup of applicants. We had 22 applicants for the 11 slots, and it was a tough, it was a tough call. Councilor Kosterbadi did interviews along with our climate coordinator, Katie Guevaras, and I. And, but I think we have an amazing, amazing group, so we look forward to them starting work in January. Okay, next item is, am I skipping anything? Okay, next item is speed limits on local streets. A discussion and presented by our engineer, Jennifer Garbley.
All right. So you received your packet. Thanks for having me here tonight. We're going to talk about speed limits on local streets in Milwaukee. And the first thing I want to discuss is, you know, why reduce speeds? I think there's five really kind of important elements to that. One, it enhances road safety. Two, it improves pedestrian and cyclist safety. Three, it reduces environmental impacts. Four, it enhances quality of life. And five, it encourages active transportation, which are all goals we're trying to achieve in our transportation system. So here's a road classification map that we have lined out. And this would mean the potential of reducing roads as speeds on our collectors and our local streets. It would not include arterials.
So are the blue arterials?
The red.
The red arterials.
The red is arterials, yeah, red and kind of purplish. So we did, over the last couple of months, a Engage Milwaukee survey. We had 268 people complete the survey. Results of that is a majority, 54.5%, wasn't supportive of reducing speeds on our streets. This is also in line with our proposed TSP of looking at reducing speeds throughout the city. So this is my proposal, or the city's proposal, is we would like to roll out the program over multiple years. One, this would allow us to complete the work in-house, so we don't have to hire a contractor, which will save money. It'll also allow us to install it with other engineering tools that will also help slow people down. So it's not just putting up signage, it's actually looking if there's other, we need to put speed cushions, or diverters, or ball belts, or other things to improve reducing speed on that street besides just putting up a sign. I would like to focus, if this is what you'd like to move forward with, is really our bikeways. Our bikeways are, by showing that we can reduce speeds on those streets, would be the most, or the largest impact at this point. And so that's what we're proposing to work on over the next two years, is our bikeways, based off of our TSP and our new bike classification map. And this would allow us to really focus on those streets, making sure we're installing things properly. It is a combination of possibly collectors and local roads. Example would be Monroe Greenway, that's going to be installed. It's a 25 mile per hour. I would like to drop it to 20, to be honest, to make it safer, because those bikes are, it's a shared road environment. This also addresses our most vulnerable people using the roadway, that's our cyclists and our pedestrians. It allows us also to educate the importance of reducing speeds over the years as we can move through the other neighborhoods, if we want to. So, questions?
So I have a couple clarifying questions, and then I'll open it up to others. How, I know the, it came out of the TSP, the TSP Advisory Committee's support for this. How strong was that support?
It was very strong.
Very strong, okay. And did you discuss phasing in with them, and did they have a view on that?
We did not discuss phasing in.
Okay. You sounded like you were about to... Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for this. I appreciate the information. A couple of things, so when I'm looking at this map, does that mean that, because when I was first thinking about this, I was hoping that within the neighborhood streets, we would be doing that too, because those are becoming a lot of cut-throughs with people speeding. Are those included?
Neighborhood streets would be included.
They are, yeah, I just want to make sure it wasn't just major... They they are, yeah. I just want to make sure it wasn't just major bikeways.
No, no, no. I just want to start with, so if we want to do it in-house, we can't do everything at one time. Otherwise, we'd have to hire a contractor to do that. We just don't have the capability.
Right.
So I'm proposing that we start with the bikeways first as the first implementation and then we would move.
Okay. Um, the other two, the other two things, uh, because I am supportive of this, but I I think we do need to uh have a little bit more transparency in terms of cost. Um, people need to know what this is gonna cost. Um, and also with the data that supports this as well, I think is important to have to share. Um, because this, this is kind of similar to what Portland did with their twenty is plenty. Um, and I know that there's data that people are probably gonna want to see that that show that going from twenty-five to twenty is gonna have a positive impact.
So did you, in your packet, there is a bunch of material from?
Right, I'm just saying for the public.
Okay.
Yeah, just I, I just want to make sure that this is out and available for the public as much as possible. Um, just for, you know, again, for cost and just explaining why and showing the data behind it.
Counselor, to your quite good question about cost and Jen and Peter, correct if I get this wrong, but I think if there's direction tonight to move forward, this would be put into your C I P. So as we go through the budget process, you would see it as a line item in that. It's daylight, both staff costs and and material costs of implementing this. So you'll get a chance to it's not like you prove it tonight and then it's happening. You're still gonna have to budget for it through the budget process and we can definitely make sure that cost information is clear.
Right, I know, I understand. I just usually when we talk about these things, there's usually like some sort of a barometer as to how much. And we've, we've just talked about doing this, but not really the data or the the and again, I know the data's in the packet, but not everybody out there is reading the packet. So I just want to make sure that we're on point with making sure that 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 information is accessible.
The T S P called out a line item as four hundred thousand dollars to do it outside of um to do it at power contractor to basically install it all, right? So I don't know what the cost would be at the moment with it in-house.
Yeah, that that's fine. Just as long as we get there, that's all. Thank you.
Um, I appreciate your work to phase this in because I wouldn't want to add on. I think we contracted a lot of services and more and more, I think, the in-house is really valuable. Um, I, I guess my, I I would agree with what Councilor Chris Rorby is saying. It would be helpful for folks to see the impact of something like this. And I wonder if it would be possible to collect any data on the speeds before and the speeds after. That's two burdensome, I totally understand, but I do think the narrative of this is what we saw before, this is what the impact of this change um would be really helpful for folks.
A hundred percent, we can do our own speed studies in-house as far as that goes. So before we implement um any of these changes and then have a study afterwards, um, you, yeah. Usually you want a few months afterwards so people get used to the um new implementation of what was installed.
Okay. The other thing, I know that someone is working on a spot grant right now to do um signage, kind of like what was proposed on twenty-ninth. Um, that has, if you go on Clinton Street, they're Greenway in Portland, they've got two little sign counters that show this is a bike way. Um, and I wonder if it, to do that type of signage concurrent concurrent with this signage change creates some type of economy scale. Um, maybe that's something to follow. It hasn't even been submitted to P S A yet, but that's going down the pipeline. Maybe that's something to align with this timeline as well.
Uh, yes, that's potentially, I I mean, we're looking at this basically a bike wave bucket for the new C I P that I was hoping to plan. This change would be inter- you know, all incorporated.
Slor Massey, anything for me?
Yeah, I just uh echoed the uh the comments made earlier about um um making a case for the public about the advantages of this. And the reason I say that is that, you know, I I can personally be for this, but when I looked at the results of the survey, yeah, there was a majority, but it wasn't an overwhelming majority. It was a fairly significant pe- uh uh percentage of people who were against it. And so I I I think that we have some uh some uh, you know, outreach work to do that. I just think that's darn near as important as, you know, as putting up the new signs.
Sure, and that's why I think also phasing the project, you give us time to continue that education and continue informing the public of what's happening, what's, why this is important.
Well, it's interesting you say that because I I I will, I will tell you that I I mulled in my mind about uh the the phasing in it has some advantages if you, as you has have have uh said. But there's, there's also kind of a downside in that, you know, um, you know, I, you know, a lot of times I think that that doing things completely is 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 easier. You know, it's kind of like the, you know, pull the Band-Aid off real quick. Uh, and so.
Well, I think it's also, I mean, that's a comment I was gonna make, because I think it's also more understandable for the public.
That's what I'm, what I'm saying is.
If you have twenty-nine, it's twenty miles an hour, and Boyd and Malcolm and all these others are twenty-five, like, people aren't gonna remember the law enforcement piece of it. I I do think there were a lot of comments and the public comments about how enforcement is key.
And just basic understanding, you know? You gotta remember which ones have changed and that kind of thing because uh, yeah, you can see the signs, but people are creatures of habit as well.
Yeah, I think um the uh that I am concerned, I do feel like in terms of public compliance and uh you know, and really rolling it out, it would be more, it would work better if it were rolled out like one summer, um, you know, one sort of three-month period all around the city. I did ask the police chief for his views on that and he was more generally supportive of the staff recommendation. He noted that they're down a patrol officer right now. Um, we, you know, we, we hopefully later tonight, we'll be approving some more hiring for the police department. I guess in my mind, I still think, even if it's put out to twenty twenty-seven, I still think doing it all at once may make more sense. I guess that's kind of my gut feeling about uh public compliance and actually, you know, having some enforcement and actually actually bringing down the speeds.
Thanks, Mayor. And I think that that last point of the, it it might delay, and I kind of wanted Jen and or Peter to speak to. I think, you know, that that's totally doable, but to this point of the C I P budget and other transportation priorities, would you guys say it's accurate that if the direction from council was to do it in a shorter timeframe, likely with a contractor, that we're talking about not implementing in the near part of the next biennium because we have other transportation work slated? Or is that TBD? Or would it maybe delay some of the other bike way bucket? Um, or safe street enhancements, improvements, if we did this first, like this would be the first tranche of safe streets enhancements? Can you speak a little bit to the sequencing if it was supposed to be the whole thing?
I think there's a little bit of TBD there still. I mean, we're still in our draft phases of developing our 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 capital, our 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 next capital improvement. And you know, I think you got mentioned before, one of the things that we're really trying hard to do is look at our our capacity to execute projects uh and not have lots of projects that we're not executing. So, you know, having, having a larger scale uh project that's that's citywide in terms of 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 putting out there puts, certainly puts some burden in terms of capacity, both uh uh on on Jen's staff and developing the traffic regulations and all those, all those pieces. But if we're, if we're trying to do it using in-house staff, uh, and I I I'm fairly confident that, you know, if we have a phased approach, we can do it cheaper than than going out and contracting, you know? Uh, and also, we were able to also take advantage of other projects that we might have going on in those neighborhoods to uh include those changes uh to to speed limits as we're doing those projects. So I I I do think, you know, there is an a- an additional expense uh for us, both in terms of staff capacity and 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 resources, uh, the cost to do that all at once. Um, I I I do think um just in my experience, do it, changing from yield signs to stop signs in a, in another community throughout the city. Uh, the police were, uh, the police there were were overwhelmed with the enforcement piece on that. You know, the uh in speed, you know, stop signs maybe at 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 intersections, sometimes people will, you know, people aren't necessarily calling up the police, somebody stopped this, you know, didn't went through that stop sign. But like when you've addressed, you have adopted a new speed limit going through the neighborhoods and you're doing it throughout the city, we're gonna have a lot of uh a lot of people calling about people speeding. So I think that's, that's part of it uh as, that it's a little bit easier perhaps to to phase uh certain, certain areas of the community, whether it's a bike way or 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 neighborhood phase uh to to sort of help, uh, help with that enforcement and uh edu- public education with the, with the community as well. Um, I don't know if I answered everything there.
Yeah, I think so. I think that's, that's great.
I would also say, you know, you know, I think statistics, there's, there's, there's lots of studies and I think much of the studies show like if you, if you drop the speed limit from twenty-five to twenty, that you're, you know, effectively reducing in half the severity and risk of severe injury and fatal injuries, right? Just that five mile an hour difference.
If they actually slow down.
If they, well, sure, of course. I mean, but I I think in many of the neighborhoods that we have, you know, or there, there's a lot of off-street parking, much of, much of the neighborhoods. The speed limits aren't really that much higher. I mean, we certainly do have some poor, you know, some places on collectors where speed limits probably exceed uh twenty-five miles an hour, the posted speed limits, more than we would like to see them. But it's, it's about sort of setting that standard and, you know, building compliance through through education and 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 enforcement, right? And it takes time to do that. Uh, and I think it's harder doing it all at once throughout, throughout the year, sadly.
Can you help clarify for me, if we went out and contracted this work, how much napkin math would that add to the cost of the project?
Well, I think Jen mentioned that the T S P outlined up conceptually the project that's about four hundred thousand dollars. I think we could do it a lot cheaper as a phased approach. You know, we can buy, we we, we're buying, we're buying the you know, the signs and using our labor to do that and we're not marketing it up to to make a profit and 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 mobilize, you know, mobilize a crew to do that. That being said, we're still gonna be rely on, in in some places, contracts to do the work because we're doing other street projects. So we would, we would include that work in those other street projects.
And so I think um, kind of what I was, you know, and I think TBD is a finance, we have a capital improvement uh budgeting process where we're gonna explore this, but I think I was kind of, there's a bit of a trade-off of speed and cost and scale and cost. And so I think what, again, we're not making decisions tonight on those things, on the cost, on the speed, but if the direction is to move forward and the direction from from the, from the consensus is to do it in a bigger format, it would be helpful to hear if it's do it big and do it fast because that might change what we prioritize when we bring you the C I P in February. And or if it's do it big, but it's okay if it comes in three years, that's also helpful um for us. I don't know if that's making it at all clear.
Well, it sounds like I'm the only one really advocating for do it big. I I would say, I mean, I I just think it's gonna be an enforcement nightmare because people are gonna be like, I was, it was twenty, it was just twenty-five and I'm on twenty. You know, I just think it's, it's, it's gonna be, I, I don't know. But um, police chief is fine with it and and it's the staff recommendation. Um, I'm not, it's not something I'm gonna uh fall on my sword over, but I would have said do it big and it's okay to go to twenty twenty-seven.
Yeah, I I kind of see your point there. I don't know if you guys know, like, there's a street off of Johnson Creek going north, where going northbound, I think it's, was it fifty-second, I think it is? Going northbound, it's a side street, but going northbound on it, on one side of the street, it's twenty. Going southbound is twenty-five. Which is very odd. So I'm assuming it's the same unless there's a border discrepancy with Portland. Um, so I can, yeah, if you're going into Portland, it's twenty, and if you're coming back to us, it's twenty-five. Very strange. So I can see how there can be some discrepancy right like that. So I see the benefit of doing it all at once too, because you also want it to have an impact. Um, and I don't know, I mean, is, I mean, have we, has there been any impact concerns in terms of the effectiveness of it when you roll it out or whether you just do it all at once?
Michael, Peter?
Just my experience back in 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 a previous job, like where we, it wasn't speed limits, it was changing, you know, providing additional regulation at at intersections and move taking away yield signs and stop signs and doing that throughout the city. I mean, it wasn't like every single street, but there were lots of, lots of interceptions that we had to go through and do that. And uh, it, it was a, it was a bit of a challenge with the uh with the community uh it with that engagement and also the, and some of that enforcement. So uh so I'm just using that as an example. It may not be apples to apples there, but I I have seen some of the challenges with that type of track, of traffic regulation throughout, throughout the city. But doesn't mean we couldn't overcome it, but uh.
Yeah, I I'd be curious to.
So our collectors are signed, but a lot of our local roads aren't. They're just assumed it's twenty-five. So when we start putting up twenty miles per hour, it will be the new sign that is actually placed, um, which will actually make that clear of what it is on local streets.
Uh, Councilor President, you were on the uh T S P Advisory Committee and I know you often attend the P S A as well. Um, any particular views on this?
I think that, I guess, part of the reason I asked that cost question is after sitting on the T S, T A C, I know that every dollar, I mean, we kind of squabble over this on the guy, a hundred thousand dollars, we could roll the difference. If we can save a hundred thousand dollars here, that's a hundred thousand dollars that we can spend somewhere else. Um, and it helps me just in understanding that a lot of these, you're saying a lot of the local streets don't have any signage right now. So if the only sign you have in your neighborhood now is a twenty mile per hour sign, even though the other streets don't have a twenty mile per hour sign, it's not like Alphawood Street is gonna have a twenty-five mile per hour sign. They're only gonna see the twenty mile per hour sign. And I think that that, hearing that, I think that makes me feel a little bit more at ease with this change. But in this, I don't this might surprise you, I'm getting to be more and more of a fiscal hawk and the fact that we can save money on this project that can be spent in other transportation projects, I think is a worthwhile endeavor because we have so many transportation needs across the city and to stretch those dollars out as efficiently as possible, I think would be.
Councilor Massey?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, I I think, you know, you know, it's been, you know, sort of a perfect world if we could do it, you know, quickly, at low cost, you know, I'm, I'm you know, in a fantasy land here, you know, but that that's not gonna be possible. But but I I support this and I'll tell you the 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 reason that that I I I want to support it and I really didn't consider it until tonight is that um in Jen's testimony, she said, you know, if we do this over time, we can integrate it with the other work that's going on on the, on the, on the streets, uh, which can be a lot of the traffic calming enhancements, you know, as this goes in. And uh, to me, that's just a multiplier for safety if when, you know, we do this, we can bundle it with some other work and and, you know, that will probably be like contractor work, but it'll be add-on contractor work, so it won't be, you know, huge amounts of doing the whole city or anything like that. So that's kind of the thing that uh that kind of the factor that has put me in the category of supporting the incremental approach.
Okay, well, it sounds like we generally have support for the incremental approach. I do take the point that a lot of the streets don't have signs, although I will say in Iowa Station, we've had signs that say fifteen miles an hour for several years because, for a decade, because there's a state law that says streets under a certain width can be fifteen or fifteen miles an hour, skinny streets. Um, I will tell you, the people on the other streets are not driving, or are not driving fifteen miles an hour. But um, so uh, anyway, but I think, I think you've got the, I think you've got agreement with your staff recommendations, so we'll watch for that in the C I P next year.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Uh, middle income revolving loan program. And this was placed on the agenda by our council president and Councilor Stavendor, who unfortunately is not here. Uh, do you wanna say any, uh, introductory things for it? I understand staff does have a staff presentation.
Yep, I need to say a few things of introduction and then I've got a few questions to ground us after the staff talk. Um, I can just give a little bit of background in this program. The Middle Income Revolving Loan Fund is a fund that the legislature passed to be able to help address one of the real barriers that we see in housing production. Um, we've heard even this council, um, this last year, housing developers are struggling with really high interest rates and if, like, money to finance projects is really hard to identify. Um, but if you're able to bring money to the table, you also can get some give with developers who are more willing to build affordable units, um, and contribute something of real value into our community and help address a lot of the challenges that we're seeing in our housing production strategy where we need housing at set-aside rates, um, a hundred twenty-eight percent AMI and below. Um, this is a program that some other cities and counties have started to take advantage of, or I should say city and county, a few other jurisdictions are looking at this as well. Um, it's a program that is fairly new, but it is only seventy million dollars. So I think if I could improve anything at the start of this, um, that seventy million dollars will go really quickly. And just as a little editorializing, Portland requested some technical changes to the Merrell program this legislative session. Um, they got implemented, it will go into effect in January first. And so at this point for jurisdictions, it's kind of a race to finish. Can you get the seventy million dollars before the city of Portland gobbles them all up? And so that, I think, sets the tone for how we might consider the Merrell program if this is something we want to mull up.
Okay, I will say that idea that something's changing January first is different than what I've heard. I've heard there's a rulemaking that's not even gonna wrap up till next summer or something. Um, but I guess we have some people who may be able to testify about that, um, later on. Okay, uh, with that, I will turn it over to our Assistant City Manager Joseph Brillo and Development Project Manager Mandy Bird.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Uh, as, as previously stated, this was, uh, an agenda item placed on the agenda by Council President Anderson and, uh, Council Member Stavendor. I'm good introduction from the Council President, I have some, I think for the others, I know Mary, you've been very involved and are kind of in, have been in the, the conference calls about this, uh, this program and know quite a bit, but in case for those that don't know, I have some slides that could be helpful. And just some perspective if it's also helpful. I'm a little rusty because I've been out for a while, so I'm trying to pick up those, uh, moderate income revolving loan program concepts and, uh, I know Nicole, I'm looking at you because I do believe we have some statements, or not statements, but, um, from Oregon, Housing Community Services Department are online. So if I get anything wrong, we got experts ready and waiting. And also, you know, we have a developer here that helped put this on the agenda, so with that, jump in. Um, yeah, we're talking about the Oregon revolving, uh, middle, moderate income revolving loan program, so as the Council President stated, this is part of the legislative session twenty twenty-four, part of the governor's bill, um, Senate Bill fifteen thirty-seven. Uh, basically for the, the Merrell is a speed program administered by the Oregon Housing Community Services Department. And just the gist of it, again, to reiterate, incentivize middle housing production. And really the goal is to hit that, um, moderate income level, which is considered eighty to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. However, the allowances, you can go lower depending on, uh, what, what you wish to see happen as far as income restriction goes. How that happens, how it occurs, quickly stated, state provides no-interest loans to sponsoring jurisdictions, that's a city or county. Um, those loans are then transformed into grants that the city or county gives to an eligible housing project developer. Uh, how that happens is through a property tax exemption of at least three years on the building improvements that are developed by that project. And then the program fee is paid in lieu of property taxes on those housing improvements, and those are to use to pay back that loan. Um, and hopefully it makes some sense, more sense as I, uh, dive in the other slides, but those funds are on the state's revolving loan, we feel like we've heard this name quite a bit at the state level. Uh, so the intent is that funds go back to continue to serve the purpose of the program. We're out. Again, detail on how it, how it works, or how it's supposed to work, at least how I understand it. So the city is to adopt a ordinance or resolution that basically states that we adopt this program, we have a program to administer. After that, we, that program is adopted via ordinance or resolution, uh, there's two I G As in square city that need to occur. There needs to be an I G A between O H C S and county because that is the, the tax assessor and those, that's how funds kind of travel through the system back to the state to pay off the loan. Um, and then once that's established, there's an I G A between O H C S and the city to, to say that we both agree to this, to run this program. And once that's established, you have a live program and developers can apply, uh, for projects. Once they apply, the city or, and county determine the funding eligibility for that project, so whoever the gap is, whatever the need is for that project, that's, that's how you determine what the loan request will be back in the city to O H C S. Uh, so the city applies and we have a project back up to O H C S. Uh, O H C S, if anything goes well, they, they award that loan to the city. The city is, the loan, um, has the loan agreement with the state. And then the city then turns that loan agreement, those funds into a grant agreement with the developer. And the developer is able to use those funds to, for infrastructure, for soft costs, um, and for rebuilding their project. And again, the project, once it's built, the homeowners essentially, and sometimes in the case of the developer, has to do that, they are the ones that typically pay back that loan through the pass-through of that exemption. Um, for that ten-year period, it goes through the assessor's office, back to the state. Basically, the city forgoes, the tax institutions, I should say, besides the fire district, forgo tax that you would receive on those, um, those building, on the improvements themselves, not the land, not the land. We forego those for ten years and that's how that money goes back to the state.
And is somebody calculating when the state gets paid back? I mean, what if the state's paid back at year seven? Does it stop?
That's my understanding is yes.
Okay.
Yes, there is, um, according to the manual, yes, it's allowed to, you can pay it out early and stop that, um, stop that, that period, that period, for sure. And as I understand too, the, the payments and like the, the time period is also, it's worked out with O H C S and the county and I'd say that's a whole kind of per-project basis thing on the need. And so there are obvious benefits, the Council President already hit on some, so obviously just port middle housing, which is a, a huge goal of the city. Uh, and moderate income or just income restricted housing, obviously this is also a person that's missing in our market, tracks private development, private investment with predictable short-term incentives, that's the, that would be a tax exemption. No permanent loss of property tax revenue over the, you know, over the life of the project. And reinvest in future housing through the revolving loan programs that continues to do, provide value. And then obviously it aligns with not only state goals, but also our own goals in H P S. So those are, that's the high level and it's a, it is a complicated program in my experience and, you know, from my professional view, uh, but I hopefully made some sense there. Uh, on the local responsibilities, I think it's worth noting that there's, these things are um, worthwhile to really think through, because this is where I think the heavy lift is for the local jurisdiction. So we'd not only adopt a local ordinance, which we can tweak and we can add, we can add what we've, what we wanna see as far as income restriction goes, or even the term, the limit, the, the amount of time a unit is in, income restricted, we can kind of tweak those per the ordinance, but there's a template that we use, but there are some, uh, some parts of that ordinance that we can move up and down as far as like what our design priorities are and, um, what type of housing we wanna see. Uh, so that's, that's number one. Number two is we coordinate with the tax, county tax assessor along with O H C S because that, that I G A needs to be put in place, so the county does have to agree to participate in this program, as I understand it, in order to get those payments back to O H C S. Um, and that needs to happen before we can, the city can actually enter into an I G A with O H C S because they wanna know that, that, that tool is, is in place. So those two I G As need to happen. And then obviously it is the establishment of a new program. So we're talking about a new program, this isn't just, as much as we're gonna talk about probably one project tonight, this is establishing a pro, a program that's gonna be ongoing. Um, and therefore we're gonna have to administer this program, these things, things to consider. I have, I have another slide to, that we can walk through is, um, you know, so city staff will be partly identifying eligible projects with developers, review those project applications and work with the county to apply for those, those loan requests to O H C S. Um, like I stated earlier, defining local project selection and design priorities, that would be part of that ordinance. That's what we'll also need to do. Uh, the city's obviously, since the loan agreement with the state, we are, we do assure that loan repayment. So, and then as, as I mentioned before, and as we've had income restricted affordable housing conversations, uh, like we just did a few months ago about the Affordable Housing Code update, um, we, we wouldn't need to enforce and be part of compliance of those affordable income restricted units. So there's, there's, whatever we establish in this program, that actually creates income restricted units that need to be verified every year. And that also need to be, the people that purchase those units would also need to be verified. And as it stands, there's, without a partner, that it would fall to the city to verify and make sure that we are in compliance with those affordability restrictions and that also requires annual reporting and tracking to O H C S. So things to keep in mind. Lastly, just some, some key considerations, uh, that I, I think about quite a bit and I'd like to, so you can all think about it as well. So there's liability exposure, obviously, um, that's just we hold the agreement with the loan. We're between the city and the state, so if anything happens, if there's a default, if there is, um, a bankruptcy or something doesn't happen, that is on us, as I understood it, if I'm wrong, I'm happy to be wrong. There's accountability, accounting burden, just, there's gonna be some back and forth and some coordination between city staff, our finance staff with assessor's office. Uh, that takes staff time, not just my own time, not just Mandy's time, but also our finance staff time. Uh, new program administration in general, as I mentioned earlier, it just requires staff to further reporting and prioritizing of per-project, but also really that monitoring, the compliance and enforcement piece is, is a big piece for us. And we created a new program that involves income restricted units that we have to, uh, make sure stay restricted and are actually serving the community that we wanted to serve. And then finally, uh, there's some uncertainty around this program, a few, a few, I know, uh, Coos Bay is the, is the first city to adopt new units, I don't know where they are as of today. And I believe there's, there's a county that also is, is, but there's still, I think, if I'm, to be fair to our, our colleagues at the state, like, I feel like there's a little bit of figuring this out as we fly the plane together. Like, I, I do feel like that's kind of the, the piece that we're at with, uh, the Merrell program, so. Um, there's just, there's some, there's some unclear components to it, one being, I'm still not clear on this and, um, love to get maybe answers tonight. But since it's a tax exemption, I know in other cases, when there's a tax exemption as far as a program, usually we used to have to go to the taxing districts and get fifty-one percent approval. And that's what I'm not clear on here, if that's the premise, because there is a fire district, um,
Carvout.
Yeah, Carvout, but I don't know what that means for other taxing districts, so that's something that I'm still not clear on.
Yeah, because we are, I, I did the math with my own utility bill and, um, we, our tax, and people always complain about the city's tax, but the city of Milwaukee has three line items on your tax bill and altogether they are twenty-two percent of your tax bill. And the fire district was something like, I don't know, between ten and fifteen percent. Um, so even if you take them out and say it's eighty-five of percent of the total tax bill, we're still not fifty-one percent. So I was curious about that one too.
And I don't know the answer to that question, I think it's a great question, maybe our friends from the state can answer it, but, um, just, just for your kind of recollection, we, we have adopted a program for our nonprofit low-income housing tax exemption that did require approval from the school district, who combined the school district and us represent fifty-one percent of the local taxing authority. So I'm not sure if a similar agreement would be required in this case.
And before we did that, we also held a meeting with all the other, uh, well, we invited all the taxing districts to come in and be heard because it's like the big kahuna, like waiving their taxes, it's kind of like, you know, not good partnership with other entities, uh, yeah.
So that's just another, that's an answering question that I have. That's, um, that's it, I'm happy to answer any questions, I don't know if, uh, we have a lot of time for, for others.
And I'm sorry, can I decide a one logistical thing? I guess our in-room speakers aren't working well tonight, so staff in particular, but all of us. If we can just project, use your musical theater voice, be really animated so that our folks in the audience can hear you.
Okay. Uh, questions for staff?
I feel like O H C S will have a lot of technical expertise as well. Um, maybe they would be a good person to direct some technical questions about the program too. Um, unless it feels particularly apt, I'm sorry.
I'm just going off of the manual and our conversations that we've had with them, but they're their experts, so.
We, we do have, it looks like Jason Mackey has his hand raised on O H C S.
Okay, um, so, uh, shall we go ahead and go to O H C S? I thought maybe we were gonna hear from the developer team. Do we wanna hear from them first? Do we wanna go to O H C S first?
I think it's your prerogative as chair mayor and you're also your prerogative of how much time you wanna give our guests to speak.
Uh, I mean, I, definitely, we have a lot yet on our agenda tonight, so I do wanna keep this tight. I, I do wanna wrap it up by, um, eight o'clock at the latest, um, so, um.
Mayor, if I may, I, I know it's, it's probably out of order from our normal sequence, but I think that a, a number of issues have been raised and I'd like the state to, to just pop in and give us their opinion on this.
Okay.
Because I think that that would just inform the rest of the discussion.
Okay, fair enough. All right, we will invite Jason to, uh, Jason should be able to go ahead and speak now.
Hello, Council, is everybody able to hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Great, um, well, just a quick introduction, my name is Jason Mackey and I am a technical advisor in the Affordable Rental Housing Division for O H C S, um, assigned to focus on the Merrell program. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to, um, speak in front of this audience. I think I heard a couple of questions, so feel free to ask them again if I missed something. I, I think the main question I heard is related to, um, notifying taxing districts. Um, I just want to, um, clarify that all taxing districts are exempt other than fire districts. Um, that's legislatively mandated that fire districts remain whole. Um, there's not specific legislation, um, requiring a sponsoring jurisdiction to do any specific outreach to taxing districts to inform them that taxes will be exempt. Um, I think staff feels that that would likely be a best practice, um, for you as a community to ensure that everybody is aware of, um, decisions that affect, um, taxes, but it's not legislatively required. Um, and I do, well, before I move on, I'm happy to expand more on that particular topic.
Yeah, let's take them topic by topic and get all the questions out. So that topic, there is this general rule in state law about fifty-one percent of taxing district having to approve a tax waiver. You're saying the Merrell Act actually supersedes or exempts this from that?
Uh, that's correct, it, it is not legislatively mandated to, um, provide outreach to taxing districts.
No, that's a different question. Outreach to taxing districts is one, and I appreciate that. I asked this question on, um, email actually, um, but the fifty-one percent agreement, like if we were, we, as, as the city manager mentioned, we went out, we adopted a, uh, tax exemption for affordable housing in Milwaukee and we had, but in, in order to do that, we had to get fifty-one percent of the taxing districts to agree. So that's somewhere in state law as a requirement. And you're saying this state law exempted cities from that state law?
I guess I will be careful in answering the way that the question is being asked. What I can confidently say is that the Merrell program legislation does not require, um, the fifty-one percent you're mentioning. Um, in full transparency, I'm not familiar with the specific state law that you're referencing, uh, but there is not a legislative requirement for Merrell to, um, have the fifty-one percent as you mentioned it.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Mackey, you wanted to go on to something else?
Well, this is maybe a, a simple response. Um, I just wanted to call out, there was, um, a reference to January first being an explicitly defined date for, um, date for SB 48, Senate Bill 48, the Merrell Technical Fix Bill to go live. There's not a hard deadline of January 1st. The agency does intend to have the program, the, the new rules implemented by early of 2026, but it's not specifically January 1st.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. You sound like you had another question?
Yeah. My, my question, and I appreciate you being here to answer these, my question was about what happens with non-payment? What happens with the homeowner, the house gets foreclosed, life happens? What happens? Is the state on, or is the city on the hook for the rest of that? Does a new homeowner then take over the remaining payments that are left? How does that work?
The short answer is that the city will take on the liability of repayment for a loan that goes into default.
And it was, I, I participated in an online webinar that OHCS led a couple of weeks ago, and it was clear that if the project itself defaults, if the developer defaults or goes into whatever, for whatever reason, the city is on the hook for the whole loan, not just that one house that might default, so. Council President?
Can I clarify? We have, Joseph, if you could go back to the timeline of Merrell, that circle, if we pass an originating ordinance, are we required to accept any project in Milwaukee? Or, sorry, this may be as a question for OHCS.
Well, just without our city attorney here, but yeah, as for city administration, when you pass an ordinance, it becomes law, and you're, you're creating a program that we at least need to administer, whether that means, doesn't mean that we automatically approve all applications that are provided to us, but it certainly means that we have to run a program, you know, and that we actually have to have the ability to. But in order to run that program, we do, again, need all those IGAs in place.
It looks like the ordinance happens before the IGAs. Is that what's happened in other jurisdictions?
Yes.
That is what the manual, I think, their, their handbook calls for. Mr. Mackey, can you answer that question? Does it have to come first?
The originating ordinance does come first, yes.
Before the IGAs?
And I guess what I'm just trying to clarify here, and maybe, Mr. Mackey, you can expand on this, we're really focusing on the details of the Merrell program and what implementation looks like. My understanding is we pass this originating ordinance, and OHCS will begin to work with us to shape and define our Merrell program. We're not bound to the specifics of the ordinance, even on individual projects, we can set different criteria on these projects. So the originating ordinance is really signaling that that city will begin to participate in Merrell, and that starts the dialogue with OHCS? Is that a correct framing?
That is generally correct, yes. There are some standards around what is required in terms of language that is part of the originating ordinance, that requires things such as a compliance plan, but yes, once you adopt the originating ordinance, OHCS is still a partner in the process. There's still several steps that happen along the way after the originating ordinance is adopted, and we can work through some of those finer details once the originating ordinance has, has been adopted.
And you mentioned a compliance plan. Can you just detail, when we're considering an originating ordinance, what are the components that we need to decide before then? It looks like on your draft ordinance, it's the percent AMI that we're looking at as a threshold, the unit types, and this compliance piece?
Yeah, the, this, the, in the case of this presentation, the city of Milwaukee is ultimately empowered to define, as long as it's within the minimum standards of the Merrell program, it's up to the city to define what compliance looks like. So say, for example, you wanted to target 80% or below, or let's say, maybe you only wanted to specifically target homeownership projects, that could be something that your local jurisdiction would define.
And I guess one last clarification here, whatever standard, if we said 120% or below, that doesn't bind us to only accepting projects. We, we still, as we're selecting projects, can choose the criteria that we want to establish for that project, as just as the eligibility of people to come to us with different projects within Milwaukee. Does that make sense?
I think I followed you, and yes, there are projects, you, you will, as a council, be reviewing project applications.
So just to put a finer point on the council president's question, if we did an originating ordinance and said, you know, we would entertain applications up to 120% of AMI, but then, you know, knowing that the funds are limited, you know, and our bandwidth is limited, we actually decided we were going to apply it, we, we were going to only put forward applications that came in at under 80% of AMI or under 100%, something lower than what our ordinance said, we have the discretion to do that.
Yes, that is correct.
And can you explain to me, just for context, the compliance piece that you're mentioning, what is Coos Bay and Tillamook County done for their compliance piece, or I guess, what does that compliance look like in other jurisdictions?
I do have my colleague, Megan Ellerton, on the call. She may be just a little bit more familiar with the specific language of the compliance plan for Coos Bay. Are you available, Megan?
Yes. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you, thank you.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. My name's Megan Ellerton, I'm actually the Merrell Program Manager, and thanks, thank you all for, for having us. We appreciate being here to be able to answer some questions. So kind of like Jason mentioned, in that originating ordinance, and I think maybe I'm going to jump back to one of the original questions as well, like you mentioned, that originating ordinance really sets your, you up to do this program. We anticipate that a lot of the programmatic structure and how you want to do it will happen down the line, but part of that is the compliance plan. That compliance plan just kind of allows you or outlines how you're going to ensure affordability requirements are met. So the city of Coos Bay and Tillamook County is the, are other county, other jurisdiction that is adopting the Merrell program, has kind of left that simple. They outline how they will, what their affordability requirements will be, whether it's the 120 and below, or if they wanted to be more restrictive, and then some basics around ensuring that that affordability is maintained through the duration of the loan. Part of the purpose of the compliance plan is so that when your projects come through, they can kind of refer back to that to show you that they're going to, how they're going to meet maintaining that compliance to the affordability. That's really the intended thing, element of the compliance plan, but it's also a tool for you all to use if you kind of want to bulk that up. Again, those pieces could also come later in your program development and how you want it to look, but the main purpose is to kind of state that you will be ensuring affordability requirements are met on all the projects.
And just to clarify, that assurance has to come from the city? It can't, it is not something we can ask the developer to do?
Um, part of the, the, the elements of the program is to have those deed restrictions or affordability covenants, so there's, there's going to be some of those kind of legal elements that would be added to those projects, just by nature of the program. So part of it will be, your developer will be referring back to your compliance plan and saying, hey, we're going to be making sure we're selling at this right point when we get, when we reach construction completion, and that's how we're meeting your affordability requirements. But it, that baseline is just a way of saying you're going to assure that those affordability requirements are met.
I can submit this into the record, but the city of Coos Bay, it looks like for their compliance plan, is requiring certain reporting requirements of the developers receiving the grant funds, so they would report back to the city about their compliance with that. Is that a correct interpretation of Coos Bay's plan, or do you not know those specifics, Megan?
Yes. No, that's a, thank you for bringing that as an example exactly.
And I guess to really clarify this point, because I did hear concerns about if we accepted a loan, what would our liability be? We're not required in adopting an originating ordinance to accept any project. We still have time and the ability to determine what risk factors we want to take in, what that tolerance is going to look like. The originating ordinance just says that we want to opt in to, or begin doing the Merrell program and working with OHCS to develop that. Is that a correct interpretation?
Yes, exactly. So you're adopting your ordinance is saying, hey, we want to do this, and then it's not requiring that you accept any projects, all of that will be up to you. I think how you described it kind of perfectly articulates how you as a city then have full discretion over the, the type of projects you want to accept, the level of risk and assessing that that comes with those projects that get submitted to you, that's within your complete discretion. Ultimately, you know, you can pass your originating ordinance and set up your program, and it's, it's completely up to you all if you have projects that you feel meet your, your standard and what you are willing to accept in terms of that risk on the loan, and move it forward from there if you would like, but you're definitely not mandated to.
All right, that's super helpful. Thank you, Megan.
Yeah, of course.
Other questions?
Mayor, I have, I have one. Thank you very much, OHCS staff, this is, this is really helpful, and my question's kind of piggyback off what the council president was saying, and it's really about kind of clarity on, on timeline. So, you know, I hear that the originating ordinance is that first piece, but if the county does not adopt an IGA with OHCS, we then have code that I, my understanding is that we can't, and we, we couldn't accept projects until that happens. And then second, and this is less a question for OHCS, but more kind of my musings to the council, I think, you know, as you heard Joseph say, there's operational capacity needed to administer this, both on the compliance piece, that would have to be a part of that originating code, but also the financial administration. And so I think, you know, if we took the originating ordinance step, you'd also then be seeing, probably me, proposing some resource, either reallocation or additional allocation to make sure we could administrate that program when those next pieces fall into place. So I just, I, I get, I'm trying to kind of understand, we adopted originating ordinance, but then are we at the mercy of Clackamas County getting an IGA before we could even implement this? I think that's what I'm understanding, but maybe you can correct me, OHCS staff.
Yes, that is correct. The county is a required stakeholder. You know, generally speaking, OHCS staff recommends that the conversation with the county happens before the originating ordinance is adopted, but really, that conversation is between you and your local county. But the answer to your question is yes, the county is required as a stakeholder.
So I had a related question, which is, are there other cities in Clackamas County that you're talking to? And you don't have to tell me which ones, if you feel there's some confidentiality, but are there?
You know, I want to say yes, if you give me just a quick moment here, I am.
Well, I know on your training, a couple of weeks ago, there were some folks from Wilsonville, so I assume Wilsonville is kind of looking at it, at least. But I guess where I'm going with that question is, have you had any conversations with Clackamas County?
Not that I, not that I have had personally. Are you familiar, Megan, with any conversations specifically with Clackamas County?
We have not talked with Clackamas County yet, or they've not chatted with us about Merrell that I know of. Yeah, not sure what their position is yet in considering the program as well.
So I asked on, I asked you by email about who at the county has to sign the IGA, and you, you sort of said, you know, that's up to the county, basically, which I, I get it, you, maybe, maybe some counties are different. I know in our case, the development team has talked to the tax assessor, and the tax assessor, I guess, has indicated some willingness, but I kind of assume they have to, it has to go to the, you know, the county administrator level. Can you tell us what the experience has been with Coos County or, or Tillamook County in terms of that?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I think, like you mentioned, and I think part of where we kind of, as the state, want to be helpful, and also, I think, the program is also made in a way that we know that counties and cities all kind of work slightly differently, so it will depend, but for example, I know Coos Bay's county commissioner was the one that signed their agreements, so that is who they utilized. They've had conversations with their county tax assessor's office, but that agreement essentially is kind of consenting to the, to the process, and so I think it will just depend particularly on, you know, with that agreement to do the process, and then who signs that is kind of, if it, if it does look like a county commissioner, but agreeing to it. It's so far, it seems as though folks have had kind of smooth transitions, usually when we're working with folks as partners, oftentimes, we're able to meet with both the county tax assessor office and the city or the county, whoever's thinking about doing it, or if it's folks that are already working on adopting it, and so we're kind of in ongoing conversations with them, so they're very aware, or like, we like, we want to make sure that they're aware when they get this agreement from us about what it entails, what the responsibilities would look like, and they're very well aware when they receive it, so when they sign it, they know what they're kind of agreeing to. But so far, that has gone fairly smoothly. I think both locations have had those kind of prior conversations, and so when they go to sign it, usually, they're kind of already on board to move forward with it, and that piece has moved very quickly in terms of timeline. Of course, the county technically has to sign that agreement first, but I believe that that's moved very quickly for, for the folks that we've worked with so far.
Okay. Counselors, any other questions? Or staff, any other questions for OHCS while we have them on the line? Okay. Well, we will thank you then for trying, for calling in. I did want to give the development team here a chance to, up to 10 minutes to present to us before we wind up, and you guys are fine to stay there if you want. We may have more questions for you down the line. Okay.
Thank you so much for your time and consideration, and thank you, OHCS, for being there. We were hoping to answer questions for you more than present less. I think I have a few comments, and I think Austin has a few also. Speaking directly to your concern regarding the administration costs, not sure if you got that deep into it yet, there's a 5% administration fee that gets tacked on top of the loan that would go to the, the sponsoring jurisdiction, which would help cover that cost. For instance, the loans we're talking about, 5% would be a $50,000 amount, which covers almost a full-time staff for, for the year that you're working on that. The county also gets an additional 1% administration fee to cover their costs. Regarding the default on the loan process and the concerns there, anytime you have a taxpayer default on their property taxes, the city already has methods of pursuing that, and you deal with that independently. It's not like the city all of a sudden takes on the entire burden of the loan because one homeowner doesn't pay their property tax. So you would go through those same methods that you would normally if you have a default on that. Regarding a builder defaulting on the loan during building of it, that's really where the council's and the staff's knowledge and expertise comes into defining those agreements with the builder during that review process for the project. You have the ability to put the teeth in there that you need to make you feel comfortable with the project, so that you're not worried that the builder will try to back out on Finally, a lot of the affordability devices that we've seen utilized for these types of programs are through those deed restrictions. Those deed restrictions are not something that you need to look at yearly, they're not something that you report out on yearly, they're something that gets looked at by your title company when you sell a home. And on that deed restriction, you can't sell the home unless that next homeowner meets those deed restrictions. We've brought to the city an opportunity to bring in NOAA and other nonprofit partners to help administer those type transfers and be that dedicated transfer of these properties to help keep that affordability going as long as council dictates that it should happen. Keep in mind that council can dictate the duration of your affordability period, so if you choose to have it go the length of the loan only, then that's the end of it. If you choose to go 99 years, that's the end of it. But that truly does come to council, and that's part of the beauty of this program is it allows council that ability to adjust that period and set those terms for what the council and the city are comfortable handling and managing over a long-term period. And the final feedback I had based on tonight was, you talk about the concerns over a long-term period. And the final feedback I had based on tonight was you talk about the concerns with the costs and the loss for taxes associated with this. It is true, you are deferring property taxes or foregoing property taxes for the duration of the loan repayment period. If you look at similar projects in the city, like Shortstack or other projects that are funded using lift funding or state funding or using CLTs, you're going to be losing that that property tax over the improvements in that property for the lifetime, the duration of that affordability period, which normally is 99 years. To put that in perspective, on the one project that we're dancing around with Sparrow or with Linwood, that equates to $6 to $8 million of lost revenue that the city would lose going through what you're already using with lift funding and with nonprofit CLT programs versus what you could be making with Mural. So you're talking a $6 to $8 million loss by not utilizing Mural and deciding instead to pursue these other funding mechanisms.
Your calculation there is based on the land value because CLT, we still collect taxes on the structure. We just don't collect tax. And I'm not even sure about that. But it's sort of my probing that I've done the last couple of days. It sounds like we may forego taxes on the land, but we still have taxes on the homes that are built.
If you've ever looked at your tax statement, you'll see the assessed value of the improvements on the property. Reckon they normally result in a very small fraction of the total assessed value of that property. Majority of that value does lie in the land, and that's what you're foregoing with those programs. That's specifically why we've addressed and you and focused on the MIRL program because it keeps that money in our pockets, in the city's pockets. The other ones, and we can look at the hypotheticals on it, but you have to run out what property taxes may look like over 100 years, which essentially, that's what we did to come to that number, was just looked at an average increase in property values over that 99-year period. It easily could be far more. It easily could be far less. But that would be a reasonable estimate based on a $1 million loan over a 99-year affordability duration.
Hi, I'm Austin. I'm a development partner as well, looking at the Linwood project. I just I know we're really, really tight on time, so I'll just hit on a couple of things to clarify.
You have five minutes. I mean, I'm not we're gonna go past eight.
Thanks. Well, just in case I cause any more questions, right? So just a three couple of big points that I saw visually that might have disturbed the council and thought was obviously the mitigation of guarantees and risk and what happens with this seed loan that essentially we're looking at to be able to take down land, to be able to get a development going, which mitigates our incredibly high costs to develop any kind of housing these days. Right. Your your ability to dictate how we guarantee what kind of what happens if we fail to develop in the middle of construction, how we need to guarantee that we can iron that out. We're doing that on other projects. We're doing that in Portland as well. I could show you an example, deed restriction and covenants agreements that we have with the city not that that dictate what happens if we fail to deliver after we've received this grant, right? We had a conversation that clicked that was clarifying with OHCS a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, where we we don't necessarily have to do this as a grant if we're receiving this this money. We can do it as a loan, and it operate as a loan in the same way. So we failed, and you wanted a program that sounded like it had more teeth, just because it made folks feel better. We could do that. That's not a big deal. Get around guarantees is something we have to do for the construction loan itself. And the amount of money that we're actually asking to develop these projects is a very small amount of the total project cost. And what we have to guarantee and put skin in the game on as well to develop this is like a regular development. It's not like a lift program development or a CLT kind of development.
Do you have a dollar figure that you're seeking?
We do have a dollar figure, and it's the cost of the land. We're not asking what we're in our loan, we're going to be asking, obviously, for the cost of, you know, administration fees, things like that, which is also a small portion of the loan amount. But for us to be able to make our projects pencil and how we've been able to make them pencil in the city of Portland, which is why the city of Portland gave us $2.8 million to do one of these, is really the cost of the dirt. If we can leverage that dirt at the beginning of the construction loan especially, does that difference in interest make these things pencil and give us the ability to sell these units all at 80% AMI? Now, this loan, this program doesn't mean you have to do that. You can choose, you know, that spectrum between 80% and 120% participating in this program. If you're doing a for-sale type of model, you could also use this model to model to do rental income or rental housing, which is why probably the city of Portland is going, we want to take that money as fast as possible. All right. But to develop real affordable first-time homebuyer opportunities, which is what we're doing in Portland, we're leveraging their 100% AMI program, we're doing with their grant to do 80% housing as well as the same thing we want to do in Milwaukee, twice if we possibly can. So it's really a small amount of a seed fund essentially. Now, we will fully guarantee that makes the project pencil. Otherwise, it wouldn't. Or you'd have to have a specific organization that has capacity to go out to the state, get in line, and find another program to get that money, which there is that thing. It exists. It's called lift, right? But it's highly oversubscribed, and it's very difficult for organizations to get in line for that funding. So so as far as guarantees, I just want to hit on hit on that really quickly. And OHCS can clarify really quickly, too, as far as compliance goes. Yeah, we're going to at the onset of the transaction, we build these things, we get them sold to income-qualified folks. It's at the point of that transaction is where we're looking at the most administration because we're doing the income qualifications. The way what we're doing elsewhere without the need of necessarily a county housing agency or necessarily the city after the first transaction, we these things are these things are built into the covenants and deed restrictions. So the escrow folks do this stuff. Insurance covers, in some cases, you know, that oversight to make sure that that income-qualified person is 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 the right person that can can purchase the home. That's also happening through the lenders. All right. So lenders are going to see this. There's a lot of there are a lot of checks and balances, I would say, that are already kind of naturally in place, if you have the right covenants and deed restrictions in place. And the city of Portland gave gave us that money in the form of a grant, a very large sum amount, some frankly, to do it and do it just that way. So we feel like we could successfully convince you that we have that 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 item in place. You have a question?
Yeah, just a quick question for you, Austin. You mentioned a development on Linwood. How many units of affordable housing are you considering there?
Right now, we're looking at about 42. If we can get it up to 50, we'll be great.
And if we didn't have funding for Mural, do you have a guarantee that those units could be affordable?
No, absolutely not, especially because those units that the comparables for the same type of units, three-bedroom, three-bath with a garage homes, same comparables quarter mile away are 450, 460,000. And those are selling. And those are market rate developers selling to folks who are earning way more than under 20% AMI per metro. Those are not those are not homebuyer opportunities for first-time homebuyers and folks that are making 80 to 220% AMI. It's just not. And it's not going to happen, especially in this interest environment. In fact, you have developers out there on the market rate who are who are absolutely selling. There's no way we're going to participate in those programs because they need those appraisals to back up their their construction loans. So that there's a there's a whole other that's a whole other mess than getting getting these stuff developed. But if we just have the seed funds and we can go to the bank and say, hey, you know what, we're mitigating we're mitigating the risk. We have a partner here within the city, you know, here are guarantees that we'd be giving you anyways for the same type of project. Let's, you know, let's get this done. Right. But to really one quick on top of that compliance period, right? So if we're if we're looking at at what happens at the point of that first transaction, right? On average, and you could ask Bill Van Vliet, he was in a he was in a conference with this, you know, recently, he's the executive director for NOAA, who's a brain kind of the brainchild of this whole this whole new program through the state. I mean, he was absolutely right. If you're looking at the average amount of time people are actually having to do this transaction over and over again, it's about every seven years somebody's selling a home. You're getting in the home. So yeah, even if the city wanted to say, okay, well, at the point of a transaction, you need to send it to somebody so that we can see the title and the lender income qualified you. How much administration is that really over the lifetime of this? This is not rental housing where you need that compliance, not only through the state or usually through cities like the Portland Housing Bureau does in Portland, whether you're participating inclusion of your housing there, you got to comply with that. And there's a huge program, a huge division that that oversees that type of compliance. We don't need that for the type of program that we're trying to implement here with just for-sale, first-time homebuyer, moderate-income housing opportunities. Right? And to clarify one last thing. So I think the reason why the 50%, 51% test is really around, okay, is when you at least in Portland, at least, is how I understand it. And maybe OHCS can clarify this. But when you're perpetually abating taxes forever, right? Yeah, you got to have you got to have some you have some bigger sign off. This is for just the period of the payback of the loan. And I think we've shown you models where we can pay that back faster, depending on your choice and how we how we implement that unit mix, right? What are we trying to offer with that stuff? So we have some flexibility there, and that and that can be that can be your choice, you know, if you're to choose to move forward. Yeah.
Okay, your question?
Yeah, I have a question. So what happens if somebody sells it five years into it, who's on the hook for the rest of that? I got this one. Then they just transfers to the next homeowner, and then title still plays it stays in place, as do the deed restrictions. When they go to sell it again, so long as it's within the affordability period that council sets for that project, it would go back through that same affordability metrics and test.
So the deed restriction can be for a period of years? It's not for it doesn't have to lay for the whole time of the of the property?
That's that's correct. You can dictate the affordability period. That's very different from the payback period. That payback period, we have to go to OHCS and say, hey, we got to pay this thing back within 10 years. So the amount of money that we can take in.
No, I'm asking you a question about Oregon deed law.
Yeah.
Can a deed? I haven't ever heard of a deed restriction that is time limited.
There's 99-year deed restrictions enforced pretty commonly on deeds.
That is most common with CLTs, but you could make it. I don't know what the law is for how long you could make it, but certainly beyond our living years and our grandchildren's probably.
As it's a deed in the covenant, the title companies have to check that prior to transferring title. And if you're not meeting the criteria of that title, then that's where you're you're identifying that you're either in or out of that period.
That's exactly right.
Last question. We need to move on.
I was gonna wrap this up here, actually. So my ask to council tonight would be that we provide direction to staff to prepare an originating ordinance for us to adopt that has an AMI threshold of 120 or less, has all of the unit types that are allowable under the ordinance and models off of Coos Bay's compliance system. We can still set different qualifications for any projects that come forward to us. But I think in starting this conversation with the originating ordinance, we're able to get into this program early and allow developers in Milwaukee the chance to begin to coordinate with OHCS on a project that could bring three Sparrow sites equivalent of affordable housing into neighborhoods in Milwaukee. I think it's a really important starting gun for this work. I think concurrent with that direction now to staff to prepare that originating ordinance, I'd love to start conversations with the county. I think staff can start to do that. I'm happy to talk to a county commissioner as well. But I would ask that we provide direction to staff tonight to begin that originating ordinance work.
If I can, Rick.
If we're going into council deliberations, I'd ask you, gentlemen, we're finished with you. Thank you. I I feel like there's way too many unresolved issues to go. And I will say, I have brought this up at the county. I first, you know, heard about this like two months ago. I went to I brought it up at the mayor's meeting with the chair and the county administrator and kind of tried to plant a seed. Are other cities interested? At the time, about six weeks ago, the answer back from the county administrator was, nobody's approached us. The I'm hopeful, like I said, Wilsonville was at this latest training, and maybe you brought it up at C4. I don't know if that's happened. You know, I'm hopeful that some other cities in the county are looking at it, and we could have some effort, you know, where we, you know, where the burden isn't all on Milwaukee and Milwaukee staff to educate the county and move the county toward doing this. I it seems to me there's a lot of of burden here in terms of the burden on staff. And I would feel much more interested in moving for a starting toward a development or the ordinance if we knew the county was on board. Counselor Massey?
Yeah, I have lots of concerns about this. You know, I look at, you know, the staff work that's required. And I'm trying to rack my brain, trying to figure out what the corollary, what their organization would be doing in this. And the only thing that kind of comes up is there's sort of a, at least at points in the process, they're almost like a mortgage company. And I go back to what I said earlier in the in our previous session, this is just not a core competency of our city, okay, to be administering programs like this. And I got to tell you, I see a huge administrative burden on this. And so even if we got the through the, you know, the hurdles of, you know, getting the administrative task under control so that we could do it more effectively, when you look at the total project for the state, $75 million, how much of that would we get? I don't think it's very high. Because, you know, states are like states, and they're they're going to want to spread this out to as many people as possible. So this is going to be, you know, kind of spread pretty thin. So I would not support an ordinance at this point.
I would also add, I've done a lot of reading up on this. And I know Counselor Massey went to a session at LOC where they talked about this. And I think it's a I think it's a useful tool. I'm not saying we don't pursue it at some point. But I think there are so many things in flex with their new rules and what's changing, that what the legislature changed. I think, and I guess the other thing I thought a lot about is if what is needed, you know, we had a conversation earlier about land banking, and we know we don't have a big pot of money to do land banking. But boy, if we had, you know, if there was some CET money that we could earmark and just create our own loan, and that it's paid back after the unit sell, it would be such an easier thing to administer than this very complicated state project with all the IGAs and all the different applications. And I mean, this this thing is very process-heavy, and therefore very staff-development-heavy. Yeah. I mean, I wish, you know, I know we don't have, we don't have magic pots of money, but it seems like we could administer our own revolving loan fund, as it were, if we did have a little pot of money to do that. And it'd be much more easily manageable than this. Counselor President?
Counselor President, I want to go first. I would say, so I want to ground us back to where Austin brought it from. There are 44 units of affordable housing in this project or this program in Milwaukee or city. When we're talking about this, we're talking about whether we want to create a pathway for these 44 units to be placed in our city or not. And I think that when we talk about the core competency of our city, I think we have an obligation codified in one of our three council goals to support the affordability of our city. We have a housing production strategy that looks at delivering housing at different AMIs from below 50 to up to 120% AMI in our city. And I think that this is a really important tool that allows us to do this. There aren't many magic pots of money in the world, but this is a relatively magic pot of money. The state is giving us funds to be able to administer these programs and allow for deeply affordable housing to be placed in our city. It gives us funds for administrations of these programs.
Let's not make too much of a case on deeply affordable.
We can set those terms up. But this is, I guess, the other thing we can say is that the city would be so much more competent if we could administer our own version of our own program. The city does have the ability to administer the specifics of projects that apply for the new program within our jurisdiction. We have the ability to set these restrictions to say if we want this housing to be deployed. I think that this is a real shot at or a real important program that the state has provided to us to be able to deliver on what we're hearing from our residents who want to do affordable housing. And I think it would be a real missed opportunity if we decided not to pursue this more. So I'll be honest, I first for this program.
So I'll be honest, I first heard this program, I loved it. I was like, this is gonna be amazing, there's finally some money out there to help bring down the cost. But the more we got into the details, I mean, it's, 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 it's a really clunky deal. It's not very well streamlined. And it's a pretty heavy lift. I mean, look at what we're dealing with, we're just doing an IG for a park. Right? I mean, I didn't think it was this complex. I mean, this is, this is pretty complex. And there's just a lot of holes that I see potentially. There's just too many, it raises too many questions. And it leaves the city on the hook unnecessarily for things, in my opinion. And I get to 44 units, but it's not just about 44 units. We wanna do this, but we wanna do this right. We don't wanna do this that puts the, again, the city in a compromising position. And we don't wanna jump into something where only one city has, right now, has done it. They don't have a project under it. So I, I just, I would, I would want to see more because I think there's a better way to do it. I mean, we have the CET funds that has funds in it. And again, going back to Counselor Massey, what he was saying, I mean, how much we, what would that project get? How much would we get? And if it was something that we could do, administer to help with the CET funds that we have now, I mean, we can, we can use those CET funds now. I just, I don't wanna look at this like this is what's gonna get us just for just 44 units, right? I, I do, I, I wanted to apply for other projects as well, but it just seems so. I mean, look at that, there's a lot of stuff in there. I mean, just the IGAs alone are gonna be complex. And, you know, I get the, you know, the difference with the, with the tax amount and doing something like Sparrow or something like that, but those are, those are more affordable than what this is established for. So I'm okay with that. I mean, you look at Harvey's short stack, that's $250,000. I'm okay losing the tax money for $250,000 home that somebody could buy, that's huge. And there's not that many of them anyways, because again, penciling it out is a big problem. But I just, with the way the state put this together, it just does not. Like, I feel like it's the city more in the compromised position than anybody else. The city's the ones that, that gets left with the bill if anything does happen. And I'm not saying that would happen, but I feel like there's gotta be a better way to do this. I don't feel like this is the only thing to do. And I feel like we should wait to see how a few of these projects go through before we jump in. We're not, we're not even close to being, we're, we're, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a massive risk and I just think that it needs to, the state needs to clean it up. Has nothing to do with developers, has nothing to do with city, but I just think the state needs to go back to the drawing board on this one.
I guess, yeah, what I'd like to propose as an alternative to directing staff to go into developing an ordinance is to say, let's come back in March. Let's see where that state rulemaking is. That, maybe that gives people time to try to talk to the county. I would, I really encourage OHS to do that. I think it's really unfair to put all these burdens on small cities. I think they could be talking to the counties and I have, I've made that point with them a few times. And, and also it gives Emma a chance to be further into the budget process and really assess what the ask would be in terms of staffing. So that's my proposal is, is let's not say no. But let's not start staff on a drafting ordinance till we get some more clarity around all of that. Counselor President?
I wanna point out that short period, the orange pieces, just three pieces, are what's required of the sponsoring jurisdiction. There's draft IGAs that OHS provides for us. There's ample technical support that OHS will provide for us after we do an originating ordinance. There's a lot of support that OHS does for this program. We have an affordability crisis now. And unnecessarily delaying this to March, to me, seems pretty offensive to the folks who are struggling to afford housing in this. If we have to wait till March to get this passed, I mean, it will be good to get this passed, but I would hope that we have some haste in adopting programs like this that have such potential to deliver housing for our community. There's a lot that can be worked out here. There, there, I don't deny that there are challenges, unanswered questions, but a lot of that can happen after we pass the originating ordinance. That's what jurisdictions who've gotten to this program early have done. And OHS will continue to work with us there. After we adopt the originating ordinance, we're not on the hook to accept any projects automatically. We still have ample time to be able to define exactly the terms that we wanna do. Thing that the originating ordinance does that's so important is it allows developers in our city to be working with OHS to making sure, to make sure that their program is more eligible. And I think that is a really key component of this.
Actually, this development team that just spoke to us has already been working with OHS. So I don't think they need an ordinance to do that. And I will say, I have found OHS's answers to my questions for two months now to be less than complete and less than fully inspired.
My, my two things to your point, Counsel President, is this. We still, regardless, if we did an ordinance tonight, you still have two IGs you gotta put together. Who knows how long that's gonna take? It's not like they're gonna break ground tomorrow, right? So, and I'm, I'm a little bit opposed to putting an ordinance together and then cleaning it up later. That, to me, seems a little bit backwards. I feel like we should get it right first, figure out what exactly we're getting into, and then put an ordinance together, just to put an ordinance together hastily. Because again, if we pass an ordinance tonight, they, they can't, they're not gonna get anything because we still have to get the IGs, that could take months. So in, either way, it's not like, you know, you're, 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 your comment on, on, you know, people struggling, like, I think we're all, we're all aware of that. I think we all care about that deeply or else we wouldn't have affordability as a goal. But to insinuate that this ordinance would make a difference overnight, I think is a little bit.
Well, the other thing is that the staff, the staff. The other thing is the staff burden means staff is coming off of other things that could help with affordable housing. So it's not, you know, it's not like we're not doing anything if we don't do this. I think that's the important.
And the last question for you, Counsel President. Are you not concerned with any of the potential issues that the city could be on the hook for? Does none of that bother you?
I'll speak to a few of these things. So the developers have been in conversations with OHS, but OHS, there is a burden that they can speak to more that they're prevented from talking to OHS about certain specifics of their projects. There's, there's some threshold that after we pass this originating ordinance, they're able to cross in those conversations with OHS. So if we did pass something tonight, there would be a difference for them in that project. The IGAs, we've heard from OHS, that none of the IGAs in other jurisdictions that have adopted this have been overly controversial or overly complex to administer and deliberate. The IGAs are given draft IGAs or example IGAs that OHS provides for us to work with the county. And I'm sure that if we went to the county and said, we have a project to bring affordable units into the county, that we would see county commissioners who are really excited about that prospect. In terms of the risk that the city might take, that certainly is a concern that we can cross as we're accepting projects specifically. That's not something that we have to determine in our originating ordinance. The originating ordinance does not put liability on the city, it's accepting projects. And I think that we can pass the originating ordinance without imperiling the city from a large financial loss.
Okay, Counselor, Counsel President?
We also have the issue of maintaining it, right? And I know they said about the nonprofits, but don't, I mean, doesn't the non, they're not gonna operate at a loss. Somebody has to be paid for them to do that, right? Don't they? Or get the nonprofits to do that for free?
You mean the compliance part?
Yeah, to make sure that everyone's in compliance is something like, because I'm all in favor of the nonprofits being a part of it, but doesn't somebody have to pay them for that?
Um, yeah, let, no, no, you can't answer from up there, that's not on the record. Counselor Massey?
The comment about, you know, one of the backstops for the city providing, you know, negotiating the terms, repayment terms and everything like that, is to my point of core competency. You know, we're not in the underwriting of loans, risk evaluation and that kind of thing. We, we don't do that. The city does not have that as core competency. If you wanna, you know, rely on, on that, it just goes to my point that we're not equipped with the skills to do this. And it's easy for us to sit up here on the dais and say, yeah, we can do all this. It's easy for the person who doesn't have to do it to tell someone else to do it. And I'm telling you, there is so much work behind this project, you know, that it just, not to mention the risk that Adam has talked about. I just, I just, we are continually asking the cities to have to take on more and more and more. And quite frankly, not giving them the, the respect that they deserve while we continually add to this task of, of adding all these projects on there. And I'm, I'm worried about that. We're just continually adding on to that, the staff's work a lot.
Okay, we've gone half an hour over where I had hoped we would end. I will give the Counsel President one last statement and then we will do our straw poll, I guess.
I was about to call the question. I hope that we can revisit this soon. And I know I might be outnumbered here, but I hope that we can reflect on this and implement it all as quickly as possible in the city, because I think it has great potential to us.
I'm on agree with what the mayor proposed.
Yeah.
It's staying too small.
Coming back in March with a check in. Okay.
Can I, I asked, do you want it in March or April? Because if you want me back, it'll have to be April, which I think could still work with budget timeline.
I don't, I don't feel strongly. Okay, we can work on that, yeah. All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone who came for this one. Thanks, everyone online. We are gonna take a five-minute break before we, we do have a public hearing. And I think we actually have a fairly long council reports section tonight and owe it to public hearings, so we've got a lot yet tonight. So five minutes, come back at, by that clock, eight 35. All right, we're back on the air and moving on to agenda, to our public hearings for tonight. And the first one is solid waste franchise terms change and ordinance. The public hearing on the proposed changes to the solid waste franchise term is called to a dinner. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comment, deliberate, and consider approving the proposed code change. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, I will turn it over to Finance Director Michael Osborne.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're here to talk about a topic that I've learned a lot about over the last year, solid waste and franchise agreements. A little bit of history here. In February 2015, council adopted the latest Resolution seven, two thousand and fifteen. And in that, it had a provision that franchises shall be for a rolling term of ten years unless canceled by either party pursuant to Chapter thirteen point two four. Fast forward into fall of last year, councils had a number of different discussions on the performance of the current franchise system and in February indicated the interest to reconsider the ten-year rolling nature of the agreement. Last month, we met with Chris Bell from Chris Bell and Associates, who is an independent entity who looks at solid waste franchise agreements in the local area. And he directed staff. Sorry. So when Chris was here last month, he had said, gave a little bit of notice on what implications of if we terminated the agreement would be, announced some of your questions. And then at the end of that meeting, council directed staff to schedule a public hearing to consider terminating the franchise system. So today, we're here to consider that termination of the current agreement. Terminating the agreement. According to our municipal code thirteen point two four point one oh oh, if the city chooses to terminate the agreement, it would be as follows. And in it, it's saying that we must give thirty days notice prior to January first, which is why we're here tonight. So with that, we have an ordinance before you that would consider the following. If passed, ordinance would terminate the ten-year continuing franchise agreement. Existing franchises would transition to a ten-year fixed agreement with an expiration date of January one, twenty thirty-five. All other terms would remain in place and the ordinance only considers termination per council direction. With that question for us is, does council wish to terminate the current solid waste system tonight and transition the current agreement to a ten-year fixed term that expires January first, twenty thirty-five?
Microphone, sorry, Mayor. Per my script, I'm supposed to ask if we've received any additional correspondence. There was correspondence from Ms. Vargas, which is in the record. Beyond that, has there been any additional correspondence?
I know that Ms. Vargas is here and another gentleman is here both to speak. And I know that the callers kind of pulled their time together. One's going to speak for five minutes, the other one for two minutes, just kind of to summarize what they put and what they want to let you guys know.
But we have not received any other written correspondence. We have only.
Correct.
Okay. All right, so are you ready for me to go on to public testimony or do you want?
Yes.
I would just add, there was one bullet on Michael's last slide that I want to make sure you guys saw, which was just that.
The last, remember?
Yeah, terminating tonight, that's right, one forward, Mike. There you go. Terminating the agreement tonight does not preclude council from considering code changes that would amend the franchise agreement in future years.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely. Terminating it just is like, come back in three years, come back in five years, come back, you know. Obviously, you have to, you can't wait till ten years is up and the city wouldn't want to wait till ten years is up. Okay, so with that, I'll ask, does anyone wish to comment on the proposed term changes? We will now take public comment. I will recognize speakers and any questions should be addressed to me. When you begin to speak, state your name and city of residence for the record. For those in person who wish to speak, please submit a yellow comment card. You can do that after the fact if you would like, but please do that before you leave. If you're on Zoom, do we have anybody on Zoom? Okay, then I won't bother reading that. So we will give you, I mean, we would ordinarily give ten minutes as a group, so it sounds like you're going to be under ten minutes anyway, so. Okay, so Ms. Vargas, you first. And if there's somebody else, please do spell out a yellow comment card.
Good evening, Mayor Brady and members of the council. I'm Beth Vargas Duncan. I reside in the city of Salem, Oregon. I'm the Regional Director at Oregon Refuse and Recycling Association. And in that capacity, I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Aura, that's the abbreviation, our franchise garbage and recycling hauler members that serve Milwaukee. So you'll see it's Clackamas Garbage, Hoodview Disposal, Waste Connections, and WM. Representatives from each of Milwaukee's franchise garbage haulers are here with me. Keith Miller, who will be up in a moment, and Chris Wright with Hoodview Disposal, Waste Connections, and Dave Huber with WM. WM has been providing solid waste and recycling services to the city of Milwaukee for over thirty years, which currently includes forty-five hundred residential, four hundred and fifty commercial, and sixty industrial customers. Waste Connections acquired K-Hoop Waste Services in October of two thousand and twenty-one, bringing Hoodview Disposal into their family companies. Hoodview has been providing solid waste services in the city of Milwaukee for many years and currently serves fifteen hundred residential, twenty commercial, and seventeen industrial customers. Thank you for your opportunity to speak tonight. And after Mayor Brady's comments at the October seventh city council meeting, we reviewed the previous council meetings in two thousand and twenty-five, realized we missed the mayor's request back in February to offer alternatives to existing rolling franchise term. And we apologize again to the mayor for this. It's never our intent to disregard a request to discuss franchise issues with our elected officials. We understand you're considering whether to terminate the current franchise agreement this evening. We recognize there's concerns about Milwaukee's solid waste franchise having a rolling term of ten years. As noted in our letter of October thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five to you, the city of Milwaukee can amend the franchise at any time without first terminating the franchise agreement. We asked that you consider our proposal to amend the franchise instead of terminating the franchise agreement. There are costs to termination. If the franchise is terminated, the city council will need to start all over for Milwaukee's solid waste services, which is both labor and resource intensive for the haulers and for your staff, which I know from the previous hearing and discussion that you care about deeply. Terminating the franchises creates new costs to either negotiate a new franchise agreement or develop and implement our requests or proposals, the process, analyzing bidders, and deal with potential objections. Any new provider would need to purchase equipment while Milwaukee's repairers have already paid for equipment, trucks, carts, containers, that the current franchisees use to service this community. Instead of terminating, amending the franchise, which you could do now, provides stability for Milwaukee's community and the franchise haulers. It can be done seamlessly within the current agreement. Termination of Milwaukee's franchise starts the clock rolling toward ending the garbage recycling and organic collection services in ten years, which is January twenty thirty-six. Changing the franchise term could be accomplished through an amendment to city code as we proposed in Exhibit A of our October thirty, two thousand and twenty-five letter. The city council can also add programs as it did in the past. For example, as noted in our October thirty letter, back in two thousand and seventeen, the Milwaukee City Council adopted a voluntary food scraps recovery program along with a new solid waste rate to support that program and noted that commercial food waste collection would be included in integrated solid waste collections. All of this was done within the current franchise as the council worked with its service providers to make the changes that allowed for a seamless continued enhancement of services. Another example of a program that other mid-tract jurisdictions such as Gresham have successfully added under existing franchises is a reduced rates program for garbage services for eligible low-income customers, thus helped to alleviate cost concerns for those who are least able to pay. For many decades, the haulers have demonstrated a strong commitment to providing excellent service to the residents of Milwaukee while also producing sustainable results and consistent operational safety. We look forward to partnering with the city in the future and appreciate the opportunity to serve Milwaukee. In closing, we respectfully request the council work with the franchise haulers to revise the rolling term within the current franchise, maintaining the security and stability of keeping the franchise in place and avoid starting from scratch to secure your solid waste collection services. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, sir, I don't know your name, but please come forward. Yeah, and turn in your yellow card, yeah.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Keith Miller. I reside in Beaverton. Thank you for taking the time, all of you members of council. Like I said, my name is Keith Miller. I'm a third-generation owner of Clackamas Garbage. And we've been, we've been in the, excuse me, in the Milwaukee area serving people for seventy-plus years now. We're a small business. We only have ten employees. The city of Milwaukee's franchise system is pretty essential in our business and our ability to operate. Without it, we couldn't simply compete with all the large national companies that are around. As you can imagine, securing some financing is pretty difficult and comes with a challenge. And the existing franchise agreement with the city is critical and that asset. Lenders often rely on that kind of stuff and information to determine whether or not in terms to extend the financing to our company. If the franchise is terminated, that asset is effectively lost or significantly diminished. And a fixed expiration date in twenty thirty-five adds some uncertainty to that as well. It makes it far more difficult to obtain these capital that's necessary to provide in the service to these customers. And, you know, just quickly, for those reasons, I respectfully request the city retain the existing franchise agreement. And, you know, we're all happy to work collaboratively with you all on any amendments needed and move this thing forward. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Take it, we don't have anyone online. That's fresh. Okay. If there are no more questions, I will entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I'm going to close. The public comment part of the solid waste franchise terms, I'll second.
It's moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the solid waste franchise terms change hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, no. It passes unanimously. The public comment part is closed. I wanted to ask the finance director if he wanted to say anything in response to what we heard.
I don't. I thought what Beth said was fair and good. My, working with them, they've been great partners in working on my end from it. That's all I have.
Okay. Council discussion. Uh, council president?
Can I clarify? And maybe this is a question for Justin, but we have an amendment put forward to our contract. We had heard in the past that we took this early amended. The council seems like we can. Can you just clarify what it would look like to amend our franchise agreement?
Well, the current council direction has been to schedule a hearing on whether or not to terminate the ten-year franchise, so continuing franchise. So that's why we're here today. I've looked at the code and I understand some examples that the testimony provided. However, I'd point out there's a couple of things that are different from amending a term such as this. And I think it's important to point out why we have a franchise that's in our code as opposed to individual franchise agreements. Individual franchise agreements are essentially a contract. And in essentially every contract, every franchise agreement I've ever looked at, there is an amendment term that talks about amending the terms that parties mutually agree. We just did that not too long ago in our CenturyLink franchise that council adopted an ordinance that amended that to add some additional terms. The examples that the testimony pointed out are items that are, and I've just looked really quickly, but adding an additional service and changing rates are most things contemplated in our current code. There is not a provision in the code that inhabits that, hey, let's change the terms of the agreement. Like unilaterally, you've got to remember at the time this code, this is a model code, so it doesn't fit everything perfectly. At the time this code was likely adopted, it, we had multiple franchisees, right? And so if we were to amend something to add a particular service or beyond adding a service or a fee and put it into the code, that would substantially change the agreement. I would point everybody to MMC thirteen twenty-four one four zero, which is in our current code. And it's called suspension modifications or revocation of a franchise. There's no mention of just being able to unilaterally amend the terms. I know the testimony indicated that there would be a mutual agreement to amend the terms, but what if we wanted to amend without the agreement? There's not a, there's not a term like that in the code currently. So I haven't been faced with this question until just the last couple of days. I've kind of looked through the code, particularly today, and I don't find a provision in there that does that. And it hasn't been provided in their October thirtieth letter either.
You might have to simplify a little bit. Are you saying that, I'm kind of wondering if both are easily to an amendment changes in our code, would we be able to move forward with amendment like they're proposing? It sounds like you're saying no.
Yeah, the code as drafted really points out it's a ten-year continuing rolling franchise. And the offerant for that is terminating the continuing rolling franchise. It doesn't really go any further than that. So if you look through the code, and I don't want to bore anybody, so I'm going to be quiet, but my read of the code does not provide for an amendment. What would happen if, for instance, one hauler wanted to amend the terms but the other haulers didn't? The whole purpose for the code is to keep everybody on the same sheet, the same rules, the same thing. Otherwise, we have independent franchise agreements. Now, at the time we entered, we drafted, we adopted this code, we had five haulers. And I realized through consolidation we're down to three, but I think the same argument holds true. We don't amend the code to allow for, you know, changes in terms, a very specific term, which is the term of the agreement, which is the ten-year rolling franchise. The offerant for that is terminating franchise.
So, um, I, I agree with Justin. I always agree with his legal advice, um, but I, uh, I, I think the other piece to note, this goes back to that bullet I pointed out on the last slide, there is nothing that precludes you from taking this action tonight and then directing us to come back even next year. I would probably ask if you have to run maternity leave, but even next year to discuss amending terms, um, you don't have to wait till, you know, a certain period way down the road. You could do it quickly. Um, and two, the, I just want to remind folks that, you know, the ordinance in front of you tonight is about termination. If, um, and this is our last meeting before December 1st, so if you do not terminate tonight, what will happen is it will roll forward again, and you can take another termination hearing next year, but I just want you to know that January 1st, 2035 expiration date, that's only valid if you vote tonight. Um, if we, if we have, if we postpone or we consider an ordinance that has, you know, two ordinances, a termination and amendment in the, in the next year, which is your prerogative, that that will, that will add an additional year of then the eventual fixed term contract, if that makes sense. I think.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I do think Ms. Vargas pointed out, uh, typo, though, we, it is 20 January 1st, 2036.
We believe it is 2035 because the code says it is 10 years from the date of last renewal. The date of last renewal was January 1st, 2025. So we believe it is 10 years from that date, so the fixed term contract would expire January 1st, 2035. Um, if you did not take action tonight, it rolls forward, um, December 1st, which is the 30 days before January 1st, then yes, it would be, if you terminated in January, it would be 2036.
Okay.
I'm going to add just one more point. On that code section, I was talking about the term, uh, 1324100 in our code. It talks about this continuing rolling franchise. It provides the offerant to terminate the continuing rolling franchise. Then it has a handful of other, uh, offerings. It says that we can initiate to terminate at any time. A decision to council, or a decision by council to terminate it doesn't affect the franchise obligations under the existing franchise, so they get to continue under this franchise. Nothing in this section restricts council from suspending, modifying, or revoking the franchise for cause pursuant to another code section. And a franchisee who desires to terminate its rights or obligations can do so under this code. It would be, it would have been very easy to insert something in there to allow amendment to the franchise if the parties agree, but we don't have.
We didn't do that, or council of the country.
Council didn't do that. And again, it's a model code. It might be the oversight, it might be something that they might want to look at in their other code language, but I don't read an opportunity to, to change the terms of the franchise in our code as it exists today.
Thank you. I mean, I do take, I mean, I think that's an important point. They have a 10-year. If we vote to terminate tonight, they still have a 10-year franchise, or I guess a nine-year franchise, really. Um, you know, I thought, ah, wait five years. I mean, I do, I mean, I take Mr. Miller's point about, you know, clarity and investment. I mean, they've all made that point, really. Um, and I get that, you know, they may not want to wait five years. Um, but, I mean, I, I, I still think it's personally the right thing to do to, uh, to terminate and revisit it, whether it's, you know, a year, whether it's in three years, whether it's in five years. Um, that's my personal view. Thoughts? Anyone else?
Um, yeah. You guys, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Vargas and Ms. Hammer earlier today, so I appreciate your guys' time. I was really hoping there was, uh, amendment there, but it sounds like, it, it sounds like we have to do that regardless. Um, it's our only way. I would not want to put it off for five years old. I would want to get it done sooner than later because I do want, I don't want to put any undue and unnecessary burden on the haulers. And that five-year mark really got some calls from our conversation today. They, they really explained to me, um, more in depth about their, their challenges, the finance realm and, you know, appreciation of the truck and, and things like that. So I, I, I think five years is, is gonna hurt them. Um, I, I think it'd probably be sooner the better, five minutes, because I think we all kind of, kind of have an idea of where we're kind of going with it, so I don't think we need to wait that long.
Well, and there's nothing in the, just, you know, there's nothing in this ordinance terminating that dictates how long they, how long we wait. Um, other thoughts?
Um, I came into this thinking that there was the opportunity to amend, so I think that that is, um, helpful clarification, Justin. I guess I do, I'll echo what Councilor Cervati is saying. I hear the financial challenges of depreciating assets over a long time period, and the extent to which we can quickly work to establish a new franchise agreement, one that allows, that has an amendment clause in it too, um, to be able to provide the stability that the haulers need. Like, I, I recognize there are only so many franchises that are going to be in the new RFP process, and I think that with that in mind, proactively working with haulers to give them the stability that they need to not have to, like, really overly burden our freight carriers by trying to price in uncertainty of a, like, change in the contract. I think that is a real worry that I have, and instead of looking in front of that, I think is important, but knowing that we can amend the contract, um, unless we terminate, I think that's important to me.
All right. No further discussion. I would entertain a motion.
I move for the first and second reading by title only and adoption of the order of terminating the continuing solid waste franchise system pursuant to chapter 13 dash 24 of the Milwaukee Municipal Code.
Do I have a second?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance terminating the continuing solid waste franchise system pursuant to chapter 13.24 of the Milwaukee Municipal Code. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Uh, it passes unanimously. Ms., uh, well, I guess I'm not supposed to say that. I, uh, preempted Ms. Madigan. Um, uh, Ms. Sager, could you please read the ordinance two times by title only?
Sorry, Ms. Madigan or Ms. Sager? I read it. Okay. I read it, and then move up. Sorry, I got my name confused. Yep. There it goes. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, terminating the continuing solid waste franchise system pursuant to chapter 13.24 of the Milwaukee Municipal Code. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon, terminating the continuing solid waste franchise system pursuant to chapter 13.24 of the Milwaukee Municipal Code.
Thank you. Ms. Madigan, would you please poll the council? Councilor Cervati?
Aye.
Council, uh, Council President Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Massey?
Aye.
Mayor Beatty?
Aye.
Uh, uh, ordinance 2258 passes unanimously for zero.
Mayor, just before we move on from this agenda item, and it's, it's okay if the answer is no, but I just, you know, we, we, there was some chatter tonight about bringing this back, bringing this topic back, and I just wanted to ask if there was direction tonight to staff about when to potentially pencil that in to our forecaster. Um, again, this is the type of thing I don't want to lose sight of, but I, it does take some staff work, so I would appreciate direction if there is any on a timeframe you'd like to bring the conversation back.
Well, I guess, I mean, I appreciate the, you know, sort of urgency that Councilor Cervati, um, mentioned, but we are going into budget season the first half of next year, so, I mean, I feel like maybe if, if, if there is that urgency on this part of the haulers, they can approach us, of course, but I would say, uh, later, latter part of next year after we've gotten through the budget season. What do other people think?
I can say I respect that this is going to be a challenge on haulers and letting them kind of dictate what timings should be, though understand this impact that they'll have on the long-term pricing, so we think that there is some deadline or some urgency that they feel to be needing back from this, I have to be responsible there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that unless, you know, I like, like Council President said, if there's an urgency there, that, that specific deadline or something, I'm open to revisiting that as well.
Yeah, I, I, I don't see this as, uh, as terribly urgent, um, because there's a contract for 10 years now, or 90 years, should I say? Still a pretty long time. Uh, so, yeah, I, I'm perfectly fine with, uh, you know, you know, putting a pin in it for a post, you know, budget.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Sorry.
Uh, so now we have, uh, another item with Mr. Osborne, our finance director, the budget adjustments adoption. I call the public hearing on the proposed budget adjustments to order. The purpose of this hearing is to hear the staff report, take public comments, deliberate, and consider approving the proposed budget adjustments. Excuse me. Does any council member wish to announce actual or potential conflicts of interest? Seeing none, uh, I'll turn it over to our finance director, Michael Osborne.
Good evening, council. Uh, tonight, I bring for you a supplemental budget adjustment in the amount of $890,000. Uh, this was for, uh, to recognize revenues from the public safety fee that was, uh, voted upon in August. Um, these funds will help fund part of the, um, uh, FTE count that we, uh, highlighted before in Budget Committee. Um, just to be transparent, uh, 775 is for two officers, a behavioral health specialist, a, uh, library assistant, and a court clerk. And then the 115 is for, uh, a public works admin, uh, FTE. There were two more positions that came in, one under stormwater and one under wastewater, and those budgets were already sufficient. We're just allocating, reallocating costs that would have been for, uh, capital improvements. So those, uh, those budgets in stormwater and, and stormwater water are sufficient. But the, what I'm bringing for you, for you tonight are to, uh, true up the general fund and, uh, for the public safety fee. Um, is that, do you have any questions?
Anyone have questions for Mr. Osborne? I'm not seeing any. Um, have we received any correspondence on this topic? Okay. Uh, all right. No questions for Mr. Osborne. Do we have anyone who wishes to, does any member of the public wish to comment? Um, we only have one in the room, and she said no. Do we have anyone online?
No.
No. Okay, so I will forego all that script about commenting, uh, and I will, and I guess I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment part of the hearing.
I move to close the public comment part of the proposed budget adjustment hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public comment part of the proposed budget adjustments hearing. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. The public part of the hearing, public comment part of the hearing is closed. Is there any council discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Move to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental budget for the 2025-2026 biennium.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing a supplemental budget for the 2025-2026 biennium. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say no. None heard. Passes unanimously.
Good job, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Osborne. Okay, uh, so we're up to council reports. I have a few, but I know the council president has a couple, so I'll let him start us off.
I can go really quickly with one. On page 92 of the packet, the letter, um, it's RS 8992 approved in the PDF file, um, to honor the boys cross-country team at Milwaukee High. Um, I had one of the coaches reach out asking if there was something we could do to help honor these kids who had frankly really amazing season. Um, I was more happy to put together a letter. Do you would like to sign on? I wanted to give everyone the opportunities, be a full council thing. Um, we could see if, I don't know what it would look like to allow Councilor Stavendor to sign on. Um, if we all agree tonight, could you still bring it to her? Or is that serial meeting? Um, but.
That's an interesting question, because the decision will have been made by the majority, right?
Yeah.
Can't she just, just for the city attorney's benefit, if, if the four of them choose to sign on to this letter tonight congratulating the high school cross-country team, would it be a violation of public meeting law for me to ask Councilor Stavendor if she would like to sign on even though she is not here?
It, it's not a topic that I think will come up in front of the city council ever again, so, um, yeah. This one should be easy, but I can wrap it up there. Do folks want to sign on?
Everyone wants to sign on? I think you got it all here, and, um, yeah, I'll defer to you and Emma to sort out the rest of it. Okay. And then you have something else, right?
Oh, yes, I did. Thank you. Um, I wanted to also follow up on our work session that happened on November 4th. Um, I think I put my foot in my mouth, and I want to apologize to the county clerk's office for some miscommunication. At multiple points in that work session, I said that there were, I forget his asks from the county clerk. Um, what I was trying to convey is if Milwaukee were ever to implement a system of range re-spoting, these were, from our conversation, things that I gathered as best practices that I would feel the city should implement, um, to be able to make the laws through some on the clerk's office to implement the system. Um, in saying ask, and I think I gave the wrong impression that that was direction of the clerk's office and given to me, and that is not the case. So I want to clarify that now. Um, I'm going to apologize for any consternation that I had across the clerk's office, and I'm happy to follow up with that. Thanks, Paul.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, other council reports?
Yes. I have a couple. Uh, one of them is from the CAB, just to give you an update, uh, for those that don't know and for everybody watching at home eagerly. Um, CAB is a community action board where we focus at the county level on, um, uh, fighting the war on poverty. Um, we're an advisory board to the county commissioners. Anyways, we, uh, are, we're adding more members, so that's good. Our membership is growing. Um, and we are currently in the works of creating two subcommittees for the CAB. One of them is going to be the community needs and outreach to the law is going to be legislative. Did I say this? Did I give this report last time? You gave a CAB report.
You gave a really short CAB report.
It's probably the same. Anyways, we, we just talked a little bit more about those, solidifying the, I think Robert wants to begin. Those legislative, those left, those subcommittees. And then the other one was, I actually attended the, the, uh, chamber, had a, like, last-minute discussion for this petition to put the transportation, well, parts of the transportation bill on the ballot. It's, it's the group of no-tax organ. Um, so Representatives Deal and Representative Deal and Senator Meek were in the meeting as well. Um, and they, it was just a Q and A mostly and kind of just, hey, this is what this is about. There was, there was four points in particular that they, they wanted to put on the ballot and allowed to do with the increases. Uh, one of them was the gas tax, the, almost the, uh, per mile. Um, it was just the stiff, and then I can't remember. I have it written down clearly not here. Um, but yeah, so, uh, there, there was no vote taken on if the chamber was going to support it. It was just, again, more of discussing what that would be, and there was a couple of questions. I had asked the question of, you know, if they do repeal those four, uh, increases, what replaces them? Because, I mean, you still have to come up with that funding. Um, and I didn't really get a good answer. Uh, I also asked if, you know, additional accountability measures would be, would be provided for ODOT, um, so that they don't have their same budget failure. Uh, I didn't get really an answer to that, as opposed to just saying that, yeah, well, now the governor can fire or remove the head of ODOT. Whether that will happen, we don't know, but apparently it's better than the independent board that was doing it. And my other question was if the legislature would stop giving ODOT unfunded mandates, and, uh, that was a bit of a no with a little bit of a chuckle. So, um, so, yeah. All in all, there was no position taken by the chamber. Uh, it was just to inform people that this was. Uh, it was just to inform people that this is what's happening. This is what they're working on. Um, I would anticipate a vote coming soon from the chamber, probably the next month because they are out collecting signatures right now that no tax Oregon. So, uh, uh, once that happens, then I'll let you know. And I actually, I should talk about that before because I'm not, personally, I don't really know if I, I don't think I support this, uh, myself.
Well, I appreciate you going to that meeting. I had seen an email from them and I kind of expressed my, uh, dismay to the chamber executive about them taking a position to undo what little bit of transportation funding we got from the last legislature. Um, Council, Councilor Manson.
Yeah, so the, uh, watershed council that, uh, the board met last, uh, last week. And I will tell you that, um, uh, if you're, if you've ever dealt with, uh, perch charts in, in work, you know, it's how you plan out complex projects. Uh, this Kellogg project is starting to look like building the Apollo missile to the moon. Um, because there is, you know, so many, you know, checkpoints and everything like that. So a lot of this may sound like gobbledygook, but basically, uh, the middle design acceptance phase closed out last Friday. Uh, so now that they're moving into development plans, um, and the technical advisory committee has gone ahead and started meeting regulatory partners before permitting so that they understand, you know, the permit requirements, um, beforehand, which should ease the whole process. They are looking at, uh, uh, when they start construction of extending, uh, the work window for the seasons. Because if they don't extend those work, uh, 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 seasons, uh, then the project ends up taking a lot longer. And so I don't know exactly what months those entail, but you know, the typical construction season in the Pacific Northwest is like four months or something like that. And I think they want to see if they can extend it to like six or something like that. So they can shorten the construction days. Um, in December, ODOT is going to have a constructibility report, uh, which kind of gets to the, to the, uh, the point of, uh, they have the plans and, and ODOT does a hard look to say, is this really constructible given the schedule and, uh, budget? Um, the other thing that they have going on, um, now is there's still, uh, always seems to be some new drilling going on that, you know, for sediment, not sediment samples, but
Really?
This is not a sediment sample. This is a different kind of drilling. They're having to drill around the areas of the, of the railroad track and bridge because when the water gets drawn down, there's the potential for the bank to become unstable. And so my first, when I heard that, I said, oh, no. Railroad, if you talk to the railroads, they says, yes, we're talking to the railroads. They know what's going on. Because the railroads can be difficult to, difficult to deal with. Uh, that's kind of it on the, on the project itself. Uh, I will also tell you, like many, uh, organizations, uh, they have a fundraising, uh, uh, project going on here toward the end of the year. And so, uh, if you, uh, can give to the watershed council between now and the end of the year, that, uh, donation will be matched up to a total of two thousand five hundred dollars. So if you give ten bucks, some nice benefactor is going to, going to, uh, match that up to a total of twenty-five hundred dollars. So that's good value for your, for your, uh, contribution. Uh, we went around and just heard reports from everyone on the board. Uh, and, um, it's been reported, I looked this up after the meeting, is that, uh, the Emerald Ash Bore is making its way into the state. And I think it's in six counties now, including Clackamas. And, uh, it's nasty. It can do a lot of damage, especially they've only found it evidently in white oak thus far.
It's in white oak?
That's what they said. They said it was only in white oak at this point. And they're, uh, they're saying they're not, it's not precluded that it couldn't go into other species. But for whatever reasons, uh, the Emerald Ash Bore likes the white oak right now. That's the only place they've been finding it during their sampling.
Well, that sucks.
Yeah, that, that is horrible. Yep. You, you, you could be on the technical committee.
Well, I'm about to talk about that a little more in my council reports.
And, uh, and she may remember, not that long ago, we were, we were all out in Three Creeks to kick off the construction. And the contractor's been fired.
No.
Has been fired due to poor performance. And so this is, uh, the, the construction has been halted and they're probably not going to get it started again until next year.
Oh. Wow.
It all ended on that happy note.
Wow. Okay. Well, I have quite a few, but I will try to go through fast. Um, first is from the, uh, North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District Advisory Committee meeting last week. Um, uh, the first thing I was going to say is they had over two thousand people at the Concord Park opening back on October, uh, eighteen. Um, and then the second thing I was going to say was about Emerald Ash Bore. And they are doing a tour of parks with someone from the state forestry office. They have identified, but they were only talking about ash trees. So I'm really alarmed by this idea of white oak because white oak is the species we're trying to foster everywhere in the, in Three Creeks, in North Clackamas Park. Um, but they have identified over two hundred ash trees in North Clackamas Park alone. So, um, there are a lot of ash trees in our area. I don't, I can identify a white oak. I cannot identify an ash tree. I'm going to have to learn how to do that. Um, just some little stats about the rec program and there are three hundred and sixty-one kids in youth volleyball and they have over fifteen hundred in Hooper, Little Hoop, the Hoopers, which is their base, their basketball program. It's really interesting to me that the Parks District runs sports leagues. That when I grew up, the schools did that. It wasn't the Parks District. Um, they use the same audit firm we do, Baker Tilly, and they got a, uh, clean audit apparently. Um, and three thousand, uh, swim lesson participants in the last year. Uh, they are holding, um, Kia has called out, um, in terms of budgetary goals. Like, you know, it's kind of like a bleeding, you know, bleeding budgetary situation. But they are trying to, to hold, uh, uh, drop-in hours at the Concord, Concord Community Center from nine to one every day. The, um, Oak Grove Community Council raised fifteen thousand on a fundraiser to help fund some of that staff time. Um, the, and then the corollary piece at, um, at the Milwaukee Community Center is about the senior program funding. And, um, they did manage to fund, uh, the, the Milwaukee Community Center Foundation has funded keeping them open on Friday. I don't know if you guys remember, but in the budget this summer, they were threatening to close on Fridays and to cut the transportation program. And they agreed to keep both of those things up till December thirty-first. Now the, um, foundation is keeping them open on Fridays till the end of the fiscal year next summer. Um, and they are working on some, uh, solutions with some other transit providers to try and backfill the transportation program. They sounded, it wasn't signed, sealed, and delivered, but they sounded relatively optimistic that they were going to be able to do that. Um, Commissioner Savas or Director Savas in this case, um, did note that if that, um, if that, uh, no tax Oregon referral of the transportation bill, uh, were to pass, that would make it even harder to fund these transportation services because the funding for, um, van, vans, and trebles and things like that would, would be cut. Um, and then, um, they closed with a, I mean, they had, um, they had everybody on the DAC do a dot exercise. And we've all done dot exercises, but I had, we had not done one on the DAC in my two and a half years there. And the dot exercise was to prioritize, um, what programming, like we got six green dots for what programming we thought was most important to keep and six red dots for what was most dispensable. And I think most of us felt like none of it was dispensable, but we kind of had to put our red dots on. Um, I think the upshot of it all is, um, I mean, part of the, part of the task was to read their kind of mission statement, which is about, you know, parks and green spaces and outdoors and does not include, uh, older adult services. And I think the upshot of it all, I mean, I think Kia was, um, you know, getting us to feel a little of her pain in terms of managing the budget. But it, I do think we're going to see moves to cut more and more senior services in the years ahead. Um, so I hope there is some indication that they are working on, you know, trying to find alternate sorts of funding and alternate sources of funding for some of that. But I, I do think there are some hard conversations coming in the years ahead. And I mean, coming this budget year, this spring, when they do their budget and beyond. Um, so I'm a little concerned about that. Um, because yeah, I mean, they may not miss that. Older, older adult services, senior services may not feel like a core, uh, mission of a Parks District. But it is, I mean, I think the, uh, the documentation that came out last, last May when they were doing their budget from the, from the ballot measure, from the, you know, voter's pamphlet back when the Parks District was formed, made clear that the senior services were a key part of it at the time it was formed. And so I have different concerns about, um, how we, you know, what can be done to keep senior services, uh, because we know in this current, uh, time of snap cuts and, uh, potentially Medicare cuts and other things, um, seniors are even more, uh, in more precarious positions. Um, so I'm pretty concerned about that. Um, the next day after the DAC meeting, I had the Metro Mayor's Consortium meeting. And, um, there was a little bit of conversation about SHS. The Metro is re, um, configuring the SHS program, um, doing some, uh, some good work to try and align the counties and make counties data and county terms. She's the counties more inter-operable, interconnected, because each county had, under the initial program, had gone off and done its own thing and had its own terms and its own measures. And so Metro is trying to create some, um, some consistency across the county. The mayors did, and they are also establishing a new oversight body. They're kind of merging two prior existing bodies into one sort of oversight body for the SHS funding. The mayor, the MMC has definitely sent a letter to Metro requesting that mayors be at that table on that oversight body. So we'll see, I mean, you know, some, some mayor representative. Um, also at the MMC, the, uh, General Director of Tri-Met spoke about, you know, the challenges they are facing. Tri-Met will be coming out in January with a new slate of service cuts and, um, of proposed service cuts. Um, they are willing to come talk to our council. And so I, um, I will work with staff to get that on, uh, an agenda maybe in February or March, uh, to hear from Tri-Met, um.
Did they mention, uh, her ridership is, uh, is compared to pre-pandemic?
Well, they said, so in, 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 in characterizing how they got in the hole they're in, and, um, they said inflation has been fifty-three percent over the five years since the pandemic. And fare revenue is down sixty million dollars a year, probably. Um, um, so I don't know what that means. I, I did not ask for, I did not, they didn't offer, I didn't ask for specific ridership, but it's clear, uh, ridership is down. I think they, they feel like they are, uh, like they are, have moved away from the, all the buses go into Portland because everybody works in downtown Portland. They feel like they've, uh, met the reality that, you know, people need to go different ways across the, uh, community. I think most of the mayors were skeptical that they've done enough on that, on that. Um, I personally have been skeptical that they haven't introduced small, some smaller buses. Um, when I lived in Washington DC, there were a lot of sort of half-size buses that were the last mile connection from the light rail to, or in that case, the metro to, um, the neighborhoods and stuff. So, um, I think there's a lot of conversation about, uh, whether they are, um, you know, sort of meeting the realities of today or not, their service models. Um, and there was some, I would say some skepticism from the mayors. It's very interesting because the, uh, the Portland mayor was there and he was all in because Portland, of course, is the center of their service. And some of the mayors in more outlying, lying areas are less, uh, supportive. Um, but anyway, I, I do, um, I, I do think it'd be useful for them to come and talk to us. So we'll try to see about getting that on the, um, on the agenda. Um, Mayor Wilson also talked about his work trying to move unhoused people into shelters. And one of the things he brought up, which I had not realized, I mean, that Portland is apparently sending cease and desist letters to some, uh, hospitals and clinics, which are putting people out on the street without, you know, connecting them to shelter. Um, he said that, uh, OHU will see more, we are seeing, I guess, is what he's saying, more people going to the private hospitals because OHSU has the capability to, under the law, to garnish wages. And so people know that. And so they avoid going to OHSU and they go to, um, into, uh, the other hospitals. Um, it's an interesting point that I'd never heard before. Um, we also did a presentation from ACLU on sort of rights education, um, for, you know, immigrant communities as well as for people who just want to be monitors of allies. Um, the city, I, I've talked with Emma some, and I think we are going to have our own website with some information and some resources for people. And I don't know if Emma, you want to say?
Sure, Mayor. Um, yeah, we'll, we'll be getting that up this week. It's, it's drafted. It's just going through kind of the review piece. But we've worked with the PD, um, and we've been really kind of scouring other sources. The mayors were very helpful in sending some resources from MMC and others. But they, we hoping that it can be kind of a compendium of information because we know a lot of our community members are very concerned about this, concerned about what the city's, you know, response is. And, and frankly, the, the city, there's a lot that the city can't, the city has wanted to, but also can't do. And so I think this one website will be a very clear place for big folks to go and kind of find all those resources in one place, including the chief's statement on immigration enforcement that he made earlier this year. So, yeah.
Thank you. Looking forward to that. So there were two things. One came out of MMC and, and another that I wanted to, um, raise with people about whether they felt you should have any kind of statement. Um, so some cities are trying to do, I mean, we've heard that the state legislature, and maybe hopefully it'll move in February. And so maybe we wait for that. I don't know. But, um, some people are trying to, uh, to put out statements that we don't, you know, that any law enforcement working in our community should not be wearing masks, should be wearing name tags. You know, those kind of transparency things. Um, and so I kind of want to, and actually one of those, I've seen a few cities, I think Hillsborough's one, where they have a, they have a page that's sort of a flyer that's, no, you're uniform. And they actually put out what their police department uniforms look like so that people will know. Like, if I see something else, it's not a Hillsborough police officer, right? So I, I wanted to just raise the question of, um, whether we thought we wanted to make any kind of statement, uh, about masking and use of force in our community. I do see that that's a little bit of a double-edged sword because it could make you a target, more of a target. We haven't had the level of activity that some communities have had. Um, I don't know if anybody have any thoughts on that?
Uh, I, I see your point on the negative side, but I, I think it's, it's worth, um, doing something. We, we, we got to figure something out, um, some way, whether it's symbolic nature or not. I mean, even if we do a town hall on rights, knowing your constitutional rights, because how many people actually know what their constitutional rights are? Just whatever we, there was these records too.
Yeah, the no, you're right.
Yeah, you know, there's so many different languages. I mean, anything, anything that would be beneficial to our immigrant community, uh, to make them feel somewhat more, you know, comfortable with that.
Um, Council President, this is your day job involves the legislature. Um, do you think that? Um, do you think that, um, no ma, you know, that prohibition on masking is likely to move in the new session, or do you have any particular insight on that?
I think it is, there's the handful of, um, like federal responsibilities detailing or responding immigration that we're seeing. I think this balance referral, I think is more likely to move, but it takes 31 votes. I think there's a huge number of caucus to prove something like this. Um, I would be back with your statements and please share statements to see if we talked about masking specifically. I don't know if we did. Um, I think we could say something, we could also testify in support of the bill and publish that testimony here, because they're, or they can make a statement and they didn't testify. So I think it's a worthwhile compromise. I think there's the argument as well.
Just to quickly respond to Council President, I don't believe the chief's statement did say anything about masking, but in this draft content that we've got ready for this website, we've got clear statements that Milwaukee Police Department officers always display their name, never wear masks, will always show you identification of request, and it's very important to us, that the public feel very safe, always to call for emergency services. Our officers will never ask for an immigration status, um, and do not participate in federal enforcement. So I think we will do on our side, you know, what we can to make that statement clear, but I welcome additional, um, oof behind from the elective level.
Well, I, I prefer that, that method. In the, in other words, we're highlighting what they can expect from, from our, uh, people, because I, I quite frankly don't know what to expect from, from other enforcement agencies, because, you know, it's an alphabet soup of people involved and that kind of thing. Uh, and so I just prefer that, that we focus on what we know.
Okay, well, I think, I mean, there was nothing that had to be decided tonight anyway. I mean, we can all think about this, and I mean, before the December 2nd meeting, if somebody wants to come up with a statement, we can, I'd be happy to work with someone on that. Um, we can decide if we want to do that. And that sort of segues into a different kind of a statement I wanted to bring up, which was, uh, we had an incident this weekend, uh, where hate flyers, hateful sort of white supremacist flyers were, um, posted around, um, starting Milwaukee neighborhood and maybe other areas. And a, a very vigilant Mr. Smith, who was here with us earlier, but is not here, um, really went out and, um, cleaned up a lot of those himself. I know our police department did some of that as well, once they were notified. Um, I will say, uh, over the, you know, 11 years I've been on council, we had another, we had one incident like this with flyers, probably maybe during the pandemic, I don't know, um, several years back. And we've had a couple of incidents, we know, like our pride flag gets, um, damaged from time to time. And we know there was an incident where somebody went out on Oakmont Island, painted swastikas in red paint on rocks and things. And, um, I'm always torn about, I mean, I think, I, I hope that our community realizes that, um, we are totally, you know, against such things and we want to have a community that is welcoming to everybody, irrespective of your color, your creed, your sexual orientation, your gender identity. Um, you know, we tried to give out a statement to that effect in, in February, is, uh, after our retreat. Um, I'm always sort of torn as to whether to make another statement, or does that just give the people who did it some satisfaction in knowing that, you know, earned some attention that they were seeking by their conduct? Um, I wanted to put it out there as, um, something for people to speak to if they felt like there was something they should do, or it's the better course to always just remove things and, and not, uh, draw any sort of attention to it.
Yeah, I, you know, remove things and denounce them, you know?
But how would you do this?
I mean, I, but let's, let's be real, okay? People that go around doing stuff like that, that don't want to be seen, I mean, that's just cowards, right? It's just a cowardly act, like, really? Can you do it in the middle of the night with ski mask on? It's nighttime, we bring masks, really? So, again, so you're talking about a bunch of cowards. So, so I think that's really what you're dealing with. So it's like, I, I'm just super proud of this community and this city and, and what we stand for, because that, that just shows, and that, I mean, we didn't, none of us went out and took this, I mean, I, I got a text from a community member, Ron Smith, and next thing you know, he's got other community members coming up to him, they're going around tearing this stuff down. I mean, I, that's just it all right there, right? I, I don't, you know, we can denounce it just by saying we don't stand for that, we don't believe in that, but I think our, our community does a hell of a job denouncing it themselves. And, you know, again, this is cowardly stuff, so, you know, move on to those individuals.
Yeah, I'm kind of in the, in the, in the camp of not giving those people even more air to them. Um, uh, that's not saying that, that you might have to at some point if it became widespread. Um, and I think, uh, you know, at this point, I just, I just don't want to give them any more attention, because they're craving attention.
I'd say also, I, I mean, I see this, and I was on a trip with my boyfriend to his McPhries this weekend, and I was really like, I don't want to tell him that this happened, because I don't want him to think this is Milwaukee, because this is not Milwaukee. And I think that if we do a statement, it kind of like, it inscribes part of what Milwaukee is. I think there are moments when we should denounce things, but maybe in this case, we put forward some like uplifting statement that we put forward, like, I, I would rather in this instance, uplift something good, something good that we can point to that is like what Milwaukee aspires to be, what we are today, as opposed to, um, yeah, saying this is happening.
Um, okay, well, it seems like nobody wants to give them attention. Um, but in terms of what you're proposing, I mean, what does that look like? Uh, uh, what do we?
I mean, we could just say this even right here on the dais, saying that, you know, I mean, everybody knows that Milwaukee doesn't stand for that stuff. Um, if that, if that's what you're coming here to do, I would tell you to move on, along, go down the road, um, maybe go east, I guess. Um, but that doesn't belong here, which nobody finds amusing. And clearly our community showed you that, because they're the ones who took care of it, so, you know, cowards will be cowards.
And maybe we could see, I mean, is there something that our equity steering committee thinks that we could put forward in the pilot? Is there? We have so many great cultural programs that we're uplifting, so many great things that we're doing, maybe this is a good excuse to lean into those and talk about those in this moment.
I think that's a great, like, question, Councilor, Council President. And we'll, um, you know, our next, your senior meeting, I will leave this Thursday, so I can kind of bring this to them. Um, and I'll also just say, you know, we, we've already got a full pilot for December. We never, we don't publish a pilot in January, but February will be a year since your last statement. And it might be a time, if you do want to think about another joint statement, I would, I would agree with your recommendation to not only put a spotlight on this particular incident, but to maybe talk about a year on from that statement, how you've shown your, and, and demonstrate your commitment to that continued, uh, values. And I'd be happy to help facilitate that. Maybe whoever has council corner for that month would want to kind of give it up.
Okay. Okay, also with that, I think, um, I'm done with my council reports. And it's not even 10 o'clock.
Move to adjourned. We're back to actually submitting some reports to read for our, a few pages.
Oh. Has I moved it second into adjourned? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Fairly, I'm so sorry, I heard that Robert moved, um, but who seconded? Okay, thank you. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Opposed, no? We are adjourned.